To begin their life in the U.S. a work permit. So, thank you to everyone. It was an honor to work with you all. Thanks.
So, at this time, I'd like to entertain any questions you might have.
General, I have a question for, um, for call.
Sure.
Good, good to see you.
I just have a question. A lot of state leaders have said the funding for this emergency shelter crisis is unsustainable.
Yeah.
We passed something today, but can the Biden administration do more? Can the Biden administration authorize more funding?
Yeah, thank you for that question. The Biden administration has already provided millions to Massachusetts, and we want to be able to do more in terms of funding. Unfortunately, we have a bill in front of Congress that's sitting there now. We're doing everything in our power to make sure that that gets passed in an expedient fashion.
So essentially, it's on, it's on Congress to do this?
I think there's a couple of aspects. Obviously, the funding is very, very important. It's a key priority for the president. But the other thing is, the funding is useless if you don't have good people on the ground and people willing to partner with the federal government to get things done. So I think this is an example of that kind of collaboration that we're trying to replicate across the country as well.
Dan, I know you say that it's up to Congress to pass reform, but the Biden administration has done more than previous administrations to make migrants have easier time getting across the border, staying in the country, and now getting jobs here. What do you say to critics to say, you're making the problem worse by making it seem so attractive to come?
Well, yeah, sure. So I think this-
More than half of them will find their claims were not valid, or go back to three years.
Of course. So I think the president obviously has a multi-layered strategy on this issue. It is worth noting that we've returned 380,000 individuals since May 12th, that we have a comprehensive strategy at the border. Border crossings or encounters in this category has actually dropped 14% since October. We're working with the Mexican, the Venezuelan government on these issues as well. Of course, there's still so much work we need to do, but the administration is looking at this both from making sure that we are doing the right things at the border, as well as the people who are here legally, making sure that they have the work authorization in expedient fashion.
Why? What do you say to critics who say it's too much, that it creates a draw that's not there otherwise?
Well, I think, first of all, the general pointed out, these people are here legally, the people we're here helping. These are people who are here, they want to work. I'm sure if you talk to any small business owner around the country, they're saying they need workers. And so, we want to make sure that we are cutting down the bureaucracy as much as possible and making that a reality.
General, what's the timeline for approval? And what types of jobs in different fields do you expect many of these migrants to get into once they are approved?
The timeline has been long, and so this work clinic definitely streamlines it down to, you know, less than 30 days. So where in some cases it's months, and now it's 30 days as they come through and get all those complicated pieces together, reviewed by the attorneys and the legal teams, and then into the process. And once that's done, then the work authorization comes rather quickly. So now, the jobs that they're looking for, you, as well as anyone, know that we are definitely in a employer-needs-worker situation across the state. There are so many unfilled jobs across the state, it's unbelievable. And so, with that, a lot of them are going into healthcare, into, you know, small businesses as Dan talked about, but also, we have a number of high-tech workers coming into the state, too. We just, I met, just last night, I met this, this young man who was a highly experienced forklift operator. He couldn't speak English at all, but he does speak five other languages. And, and he, on his own, went and took the forklift operator test online in English with a Google translator and passed it with a 99%. And now he shows this to me to say, can you help me get a work authorization? And I said, you're at the right place. And so, we ran him through, got him to pay work, and he's on his way. And that's a type of skilled worker that just has, is so eager to get out and work. That's the type of people that are coming here and looking for opportunities.
And speaking of funding, the State House incentive appears to have reached a deal on their supplemental budget. How much do you expect from the state to help? Because Senate didn't like the $250 million for shelters. How much do you expect from the State House?
Me, personally, in my role and responsibility, I'm not so worried about that. That is for the administration and the legislative body to take. My role is to take care of the people we have here and get focused on getting them an opportunity and a job. So that's where I'm focused, so that's it.
General, do you have any recommendations for emergency shelters, for additional shelters, just as we move forward into the winter and still have people sleeping in a safe situation for the COVID?
So, so now that I've changed my work ethic, and I'm working 30 hours a day, that's primarily what I'm working on, is trying to find places. I don't have locations now. We have several that we're working at, large sites, small sites, sites that need some work, but we're trying to get there so that, so that we have, don't have families out in the cold.
Are you or anybody else here able to quantify how much pressure you're able to take off the shelter system, or is that not even happening yet until people can actually get the jobs and move on?
Correct. We do have a number of people. We've had over 500 people leave our system in the, in the last few months because they got jobs and they have housing. So with that, that's good.
How's that compared to what's happening in Portland?
It's increased. We're on an increase of people leaving the shelter and getting jobs, and that's, that's a win-win.
Oh, two questions. One, both of them follow us. One, are convention centers, you know, kind of on the list of things that you're considering for shelter, whether it's behind the DCE stage?
Yes and no. And the reason why I am in the middle with that is because an open space is, is open to me to look at and consider, but there's a lot of complexities with convention centers that it's just, I'm going in other directions right now before we even consider that.
No, it's okay. And the second one is, will this happen again? Will there be another week or more of the work term extended given the pandemic?
And actually, that's a, that's a great question. And yes, we're considering when, how, where, do we do it enduring? There's a lot of questions we have, but, but this is not the end. We will definitely be working on work authorizations in the future, because this is our best success to get somebody on their feet, out of our shelter system, into our community, and start contributing as they want to and we want them to. So this is good. Yes, ma'am.
What happens if something does get denied, or if it does take a longer period of time? I know talking with different organizations, that's kind of what they're worried about, because they have been dealing with migrants, that it's been over a year for these authorizations to come through. What would happen next to those families?
I'm sorry, start again. I missed something in the beginning of your question.
If, what happens if, you know, they apply?
Right.
It gets denied?
Right.
Or if it does take a longer, a lot of time, and that's what organizations are worried about, is that it has been taken, you know, over six, seven, eight months?
Absolutely. So, as we focus on exits and getting people an opportunity and get on their feet, there's a number of things and challenges. One of them's work. And so, this thing is, this, this clinic is moving us forward by leaps and bounds in that area. And so, that's what we're focusing on, helping each one of these pockets of problems and issues and trying to get forward so that we don't have people in shelter system for years and years. Right now, we're, we're, we're doing okay, and we're doing much better now with this clinic.
Last question. General, are you seeing a slowdown in the number of families who are coming to the state given the weather changes, or is it kind of still the same?
We, I, I'm, I'm a process statistics guy, so I value that question, because I'm looking at it every day, and, and it takes us time to see the trend. The trends are going down, but that's only over the last few weeks. So, you know, sometime in October, the numbers coming into the state started to go down. Now, that, that after that, we put a cap in place. After that, the weather got cold. So I don't know the relationship between them all yet. I need more time to actually really answer that question.
He has one question.
And I'll, I'll answer that for you.
Would you like to say thank you on behalf of my community for anything I've got to do, Mr. Henshaw?
What, say what, community?
I'd like to say thank you on behalf of my community.
Which community is that?
Haitian.
Haitian, okay.
The question is for, is for Dan. We, as I should, I know the problem, why my governor and sister live in the country, it's not a good, it's not a good opportunity. The problem is with the, the current violence, the security, all the stuff. So, as you guys aware that, that, well, Wesley was killed, you know? Assassination, that's the rule. And the guy who's the prime minister right now, his neighbor's on the report that he won a, a suspect. So, that government's still working with him, and we need elections. So, we need to do, the government is playing, first we'll help us to get the election, get a new president so that we can stop the violence, that people will just stop fearing.
Yeah, I want to defer to my national security colleagues on the details of that, but I know it's very much on the radar screen of the president of various conditions around the world, including Haiti. And it's just really important for us, especially with what's happening in Massachusetts, that we're doing all we can to take care of the people who are here and who are seeking a better life here in Massachusetts and making it as seamless as possible for them to be here in Massachusetts and to work as quickly as, as, as they would like to do.
Thank you, everybody. General, can I ask you a reaction to the fact that here we have a State House, how helpful will this be as we move forward protecting this?
I, I really, really can't answer that. And it's, and it's not because I don't want to, it's because I am so focused on, on the overflow sites and where we're going to put people as the cold builds, and, and we have a waitlist that's growing. So that's my energy, and I leave all of that to other people. So, so I'm, 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 I'm done with questions, so, but I do want to say one more statement.
You just said the waitlist is growing. How big is it?
It's about 100. So, so I'd like to say this. I already told you I'm a process statistics guy. My 40 years in the military really, really reinforced that. And so, as I retired from my other professions in the military, you know, back last spring, I was really honored to have the governor call me up and the lieutenant governor and them talk to me about doing this opportunity. Because even though I may be good at it, and I'm going to bring all my skill sets from the military and my education and experience and passion to this to, to help all these people, but my passion is with those kids. Last night, I had a great opportunity at Ten Park Plaza to hand out blankets and sleep kits from the Red Cross to, to kids that would just smile and be so appreciative that they have a warm place to stay and a cot with a blanket. It's just unbelievable how great it is. Thank you very much for all being.
So, we're going to have an opportunity for media to go downstairs and check out the clinic space, considering all of you that showed up, and we thank you. We're going to do this in two batches, so broadcast media can go first, can exit that way. Director Brantley will, will follow you down and show you.
Hey, Tom, are you guys all set?
Yes, we are.
Okay, stand by.
Okay.
And five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening, and welcome to the February 20th meeting of the Select Board 2024. I'm Select Board Chair Tom LaCusse, and I'll be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Josh Levine?
Here.
Vanit Amavathie?
Here.
Mark Gold?
Here.
Dan Swirko?
Here.
And staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
Mike Barbieri?
Here.
Okay, this open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar, is posted in the agenda and the town's website, identifying how the public may join. There's no chat or Q and A function. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when we get to the comments section of the meeting, and I'll call you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you, panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute, unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comment. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. Okay? Nothing? Okay. So we will begin this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll start with some announcements. The annual town election is set for Tuesday, June 11th, 2024. At the Long Meadow Community House, nomination papers are now available with the town clerk's office on 20 Williams Street through March 1st, 2024. The deadline to submit nomination papers for certification is 5:00 PM on March 5th. For a list of open terms for the upcoming election, as well as a calendar, calendar for important dates and deadlines, please visit www-longmeadowma.gov/elections. Presidential primaries will be held on Tuesday, March 5th, 2024. Early voting begins on February 24th. The deadline to register to vote, if not already registered, is also February 24th. For additional information, please visit www-longmeadowma.gov/elections. The Department of Public Works is partnering with the Great American Rain Barrel to host the 2024 Rain Barrel program. Barrels are available for purchase by residents at a discounted price. The deadline to order is May 5th, 2024. For additional information on the program, please visit www-longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts. And rain barrels will collect rain that comes off your roof, down your gutter, and into a barrel, and you can use it for watering. Is there any resident comments tonight?
Yes.
No? Oh, you said, okay, please have a seat, and then tell us your, your name and your address, and you can speak to the board.
My name is Marika Burton. I live at 378 Emerson Road. I am here for First Church of Christ. I'm here one meeting early. I'm on the agenda for your next meeting.
Okay.
But since I was here to sort of get the lay of the land, Mike suggested that I share with you that I'm here for the Witness Stone Project that First Church, the school, and the Historical Society are combining to recognize the fact that we, in the town of Long Meadow, had enslaved people, and we want to, you know, celebrate, we want to recognize the fact that this was an injury to them, and that we, in, in recognizing the pain of that all, we would like to place two witness stones along the sidewalk between First Church and Center School, or actually, it's the Montessori School. It's going, the exact placement of those stones will be, I think, on church, on town property, because it's just off of the church property. So, we, we think this is an important thing, because particularly, it's a whole study program for the seventh graders in both middle schools, and it's time to recognize the, the pain that existed then. And most of all, we're really pleased with the fact that the school is so actively involved. On the 27th, this, of February, there's going to be a lecture at First Church describing the whole Witness Stone Project, and if you are so inclined, we would love to have you We would like to ultimately place the stones, listen to the students who did the studying on the enslaved, the, the two enslaved people that they have chosen on the 29th of May. And hopefully, you'll be there for that.
Okay. Thanks for the advance notice. Appreciate it. Any other president comments online? You see?
I do not see anyone.
Okay. So we have an interview for vacancy on the Tree Committee. We have Lou Cornet. If you want to step up and interview for this vacancy, appreciate it. And just start with your name and your address and why you're interested in the Tree Committee.
Great, thank you very much.
Yep.
My name is Lou Cornet. I live at 110 Briar Cliff Road here in Long Meadow. Been asked a few times why I was interested in the Tree Committee. It's a bit of a long story, but I'll give you the condensed version very quickly. So I've always had an interest in trees, and about five or six years back, I joined a group of volunteers at Forest Park, and our project was to put together an arboretum in Forest Park. So a lot of volunteers, quite a number of them were Long Meadow residents. So I developed a bit of interest and some knowledge of trees and that particular area. And I had an opportunity to meet Dave Marinelli, think back at the Long Meadow days, goes back a ways, and talk to him about the Forest Park project and so forth, and he said, you should get more actively involved in our own town Tree Committee. And started doing that for the last couple of years. I've been attending meetings, made most of their meetings, and basically in the role of volunteer, and I've worked various projects with them as well. Been to schools, the last two Arbor Days, where we take saplings in for the kids and talk about trees and, you know, the function of trees and why we need to be concerned about trees. Been doing some tree plantings. I've also been a volunteer at the Booth Fall Festival the last couple of years for the Tree Committee, talking to town people about the importance of trees. So as, as a natural path toward that, I thought I could bring some good skills and some help to the existing Tree Committee, and I put my application in.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions from board members? Yes, Mark?
Thank you for applying. It's, it's interesting that you're here tonight, because we're dealing with a tree removal appeal. And so I guess, I'm, I'm trying to get a sense from people on the Tree Committee or somebody who might be on the Tree Committee, you know, what you see as justifications or reasons for potentially taking down healthy trees?
Healthy trees, well, of course, I'm, I'm not officially on the Tree Committee yet, so I'll just give you my, my particular, you know, views on things, and they're a little bit uninformed. And part of the reason I'm going on the Tree Committee is to learn more about these types of issues that we are confronted with. I personally would like to see more and more trees, an important part of our environment, but there are certain situations in which a tree, based on laws, regulations, and so forth, potentially unhealthy, various reasons that are legitimate for taking down a tree. And I then kind of go toward the experts, our new tree warden and other folks who advise us on rules and regulations, and also tell us about, you know, what the future brings. Trees are living things, they're living organisms, and they go through a life cycle like anything else, and sometimes we have to be conscious of that. There's no perfect statement that's going to answer your question. There are various shades of gray in terms of plus, it's, it's pluses and minuses on both sides. We really want to fight for every single tree, every single healthy tree, but there may be mitigating circumstances that basically outweigh that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you for stepping up.
My pleasure.
And we'll let you go next meeting. All right. So, and next is the Board of Registars appointment. Town Clerk submitted a memo indicating there are two, two vacancies currently on the Board of Registars. One term is up for reappointment this year, and the other is discussion about appointments for the second position. Is there any questions or any motions on this?
Tom, I, I don't, I guess I have a question, and the question is that, that Erin Freed's appointment is up, but not tonight, and so she continues. Is that, and, and I just want to verify that, even though it says needs to be reappointed due to her term expiring, but it's not expiring today.
Yeah, it expires March 30th, so right now, she, she is still active. There are two vacancies now, because Sandra Metz and also Manny Wannick.
Right, Manny Wannick.
Yes.
Yeah, so we only need to appoint two people tonight. That's my point.
Okay. And then you'll need to appoint someone else to the Board of Registars in March, late March.
Right. And I, and my other question is, was there any, looking back or any verification of our prior comments about changing the majority makeup of this year over year? If you recall, it was a-
We don't have the numbers for it.
Yeah, I don't think it matters because of what's been presented to us. So there's, the Republican Party presented one candidate, you know, just following our prior practices, we will vote for that person, and then I think tonight, we'll probably have to decide if we're going to vote for either Richard Nidel or Gerald Duquette for the other vacancy.
But if, yeah, if, if when Erin, when her term is up, then following past practice, the Republican Committee could nominate somebody to take her place.
Right.
Is Erin, she's a Democrat? Okay. So, so then we would ask for another Republican Committee member to take her place then. Because Sandra Metz is only Republican on the committee, right? At this point, so-
But, you know, I, I think I brought this up last time. It's a little tricky, because we're filling Manny's seat.
Position.
Right, like he's resigning early. His term ends next year. So do we want to stay with the same party composition until that term is up and then talk about switching or not? You know, I think that was a question that we'd have to answer.
Right. And we only have one Republican candidate, so that would be a tough one to-
Do we know the party registration of Mr. Wannick?
He's a Democrat.
So why wouldn't we appoint one Democrat and one Republican tonight?
I think that, yeah, I think that's what we do tonight, yeah. But I was, but then, we were talking about looking ahead, and when Erin's appointment is up, whether we ask for a Republican replacement, or whether we reappoint Erin.
And Erin is looking for a reappointment, so-
Right, and so, I mean, I personally think we reappoint Erin, and tonight, we appoint Cecilia Walker and then either Richard Nidel or Gerald Duquette.
Okay. I guess I, I'm glad you pointed that out, because I guess I would think that we need to replace one Republican on, because otherwise, there would be zero Republicans on. And then, if we're going to reinstate Erin Freed, then the only way we would sort of shift back to the, you know, like we had two, two Democrats, now if we shifted back to two Republicans, we'd have to wait for another candidate for, you know, from the Republican Committee. So that's what, I guess I'd say we could appoint two people today, but then we have to wait on the third. So one, one person would be Erin Freed, the other would be Cecilia Walker. That's what I would say for right now.
But Erin's-
No, Erin Freed's not-
Shut up.
Her, we can't reinstate, we can't reappoint her now.
No, I mean, we, we need to appoint somebody to fulfill, to fill the balance of the term of Manny Wannick, and we need to appoint somebody to fill the balance of the term of Sandra Metz.
Yeah.
Okay? And that's all we need to do tonight.
Right. So we talked about that last week, and we said we would, wouldn't know until this meeting, but what we should have had happen was contacted the Republican Committee.
We did. We did, and this is what we got.
They just have one name?
Yeah. But that's all they need, is one name. We're filling Sandra, Sandra Metz's position presumably with Cecilia Walker.
Yeah.
And we're feeling, filling Manny Wannick's position with, as Vanit said, with either Richard Nidel or Gerald Duquette.
And then, will we ever end up with two Republicans?
We, we may.
We may.
The other, yeah, in a year.
If I, if I may, could I nominate, and these come in order, right? Isn't that what we said last week?
Correct.
Yes, they come in order, yeah. So, I'd like to nominate that we appoint Richard Nidel and Cecilia Walker to the Board of Registars.
Second.
Second, okay. And then we'll worry about the other Republican when the space open, and that, that shouldn't be a problem. Okay.
I just want to clarify that Richard Nidel's term is through 2025, and Cecilia- Richard Nidel's term is through 2025 and Cecilia Walker's through 2026, based on...
And I think the motion ought to be to fulfill, you ought to move to have Richard Nidel fill the remaining of the term of Manny Winick and have Cecilia Walker fill the remaining of the term of Sandra Metz.
Call that friendly, man. Okay, so we'll go with that, adjustment to that. Any further discussion?
I just think part of the maybe confusion is just the way this is written. It's kind of confusing. So I just think moving forward, we should be a little bit more specific around the dates and, you know, to make, it shouldn't be this difficult, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, and I think it would have been helpful if the Republicans had given us two names also.
And Tom, well, but we're going to take, we're going to only take the first one. But the more important thing for me is when Erin Freed's term is expired, you know, we need to decide how we flip this, if we want to, from a majority Democratic to majority Republican. And the way we've done it in the past is say, "Thank you very much for your service, Ms. Freed," and we appoint the Republican if there's a nominee at the time. But we don't have to deal with that tonight. And so we're not going to deal with it, so let's move on.
Okay, but, you know, I think that's fair. And I'd like the, you know, the Republicans in town to know that, you know, we want this to be very equitable for both parties. And, you know, and this is the best way to do it. So, okay, then we'll vote on this. All those in favor? Okay, passes. All right, Select Board comments. Any numbers we have?
Thanks, I have a couple. First thing is, I have spent the last couple of weeks with Andre Chason, who's the Chair of the Energy Sustainability Committee. And we've been interviewing potential lead consultants for municipal aggregation. And I think we, I'm going to be talking to Lynn about this. And we decided we're leaving, obviously, the final decision to her. But we've narrowed the field down to a couple of candidates who I think will be. And I think people need to understand at home that municipal aggregation offers a lot of benefits to the residents of town. It has to do with the cost of the electric supply, not delivery, but supply in town. Everybody we spoke to talked basically the same numbers. And we don't need to get into them, but it's a, it's a great benefit for the folks in town. And there'll be a whole lot of education that goes on at the time this moves forward. The good news, and for the people on the Select Board to know, is when we last addressed this, the Department of Public Utilities was in one of their 18 to 24-month or longer cycles to move through these. Apparently, they've decided that, as one of the consultants said to us the other day, 170 towns have done it, and they've all been approved. It shouldn't take two years to approve the 171st one. And so they're now moving through these things through pretty quickly in five to six months. And so our goal should be that if we move forward this somewhere around the first of next year to be able to offer municipal aggregation electric rates to the residents of Long Meadow, which is far better than, than we've been able to, thought we could have done in the past. Another comment I want to make is a recycling solid waste committee has two things. There's Earth Day cleanup on April 6th, and they're looking for people to assist, get teams together to help with the cleanup on April 6th. And also, there is a townwide shredding day on May 4th. That'll be done at Long Meadow High School from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. And we want to make sure people understand it is not for commercial, not for businesses. It's for people's home benefit only, so, you know. But that is going to be a commercial shredding at the high school. The final thing I want to comment about is the Scantic Valley. I've commented on that a few times while I've been here in the, over the past year, going to the meetings. And I think it's important to lay out what the, what the, you know, landscape kind of looks like at Scantic Valley. They're trying to set rates for next year. The GICC, which is the Mass Government Insurance System, is at about 9.6% rate increase. And MIA, that's the Maya group that we're familiar with. They're at 6.6% rate increase. And these are based on estimates by the healthcare providers, primarily Blue Cross Blue Shield, but also places like Health New England and others like that, who look at everything from prescription costs to doctors' costs to hospital costs to equipment or whatever. And they are estimating somewhere between 6% and 8% price increases next year. But the Scanic Valley, as I reported earlier, has had a pretty good year. And their reserves are above their target level. You know, somewhat substantially above their target level, kind of like we are with our water and sewer, you know, enterprise funds. And to make a long story short, they decided their consultant recommended that they come in well below the MIA and GICC rates, at about 2% to 3% rate increase. Following some comments by a few towns, including Ian Cottington from Long Meadow, I'm happy to report that the Scanic Valley Board has decided for 2024, fiscal 2025, to have a 0% increase in rates for medical benefits. That means the towns' costs go up zero and our participants, our residents, our employees' costs go up zero. That's great news, and it's great news based on some tight budgets. There's a potential downside. The potential downside is that, that part of the benefits of this year, part of the additional reserves they had this year came from the fact that, and they have all the numbers. They looked at the numbers and they had a few, and just a handful, fewer major claims. And for them, a major claim is like a million and a half, $2 million for an individual. You know, who may have an illness or hospitalization. And a couple less of those makes a big difference in their costs, even with their reinsurance policy. So that's been, that's kind of been the enabler to let their reserves grow. And that's one of the reasons that they're able to take this approach. However, if next year, they go back to a prior historical level of major claims, you know, and in fact, if this year, as they anticipate, these no zero, zero rate increases with an expected 6% to 8% increase in costs work down their, their reserves down to, you know, a lower level, then next year's rates could conceivably have to make up for this year's plus whatever next year's is. And so, you know, the downside of having a zero increase this year is you might get hit with a double increase next year. But for now, I think it's the best news we can do. And it speaks to the management of the Scanic Valley Health Consortium. It speaks to the way that they run their program. And it speaks to the people who are participants in the program. And I think that for the town of Long Meadow, I know that saving the increase in that bill is going to be pretty significant. So it's, I think it's, it's great to be able to report a 0% increase in the Scanic Valley rates for next year.
Goodness. And Josh, do you?
Yeah, I got a call a couple of weeks ago, or last month actually, from Sal Feinstone, asking me to come to the Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory Committee meeting. January 1st got canceled, but I went last week. And I just wanted to report to the Board. I think they, it's a group of very passionate people who are trying to decide how to make an impact. And we're feeling a little lost. And I reminded them that part of their charge is to advise us and to advise the school committee and not to get in front of us. Because they're supposed to do that every six months. I know they're behind. And I think they wanted to have something to bring to us. And I said, "Well, come talk to us. It's better to be in touch than not." And I hope that I was helpful to them. And they have some, some ideas they're working on, so we'll see them soon. And I encourage them to do the same with the school committee. And I think that's a great place to, for them to make an impact.
Great, yeah. All the comments, I guess we can go this way if you guys have anything else. But yeah, the, I actually stopped by that meeting because when I...
In gym clothes.
In my gym clothes, I had a good workout after that. And so, yeah, because when I heard about, you know, the first church wanting to put a permanent memorial for individuals who were slaves who were deceased but were owned by Mr. Williams, you know, I thought, well, this is, this has got to go by a DEI community, you know, sort of get their stamp approval. Because we're, you know, we're looking at something that is really a marker signifying African-American individuals who were enslaved. And so I believe we need to vet that by the black community to make sure that they won't say, "Well, this is, this is a problem." Or, you know, I'd rather know ahead of time that they understand, you know, all the work that's being done. And I, you know, I'm glad that the schools are involved and folks are looking at this. I think it's good that we're having the first sort of recognition that there were slaves that helped benefit the town of Long Meadow and individuals in the town. And, but I'd like to, you know, and I don't know if this is something, you know, we have a consultant who helps us if they can run by it. Because I wouldn't want the African-American community to say, "What you're doing is insulting." I would much rather them say, "We would approve this. This has been done in other communities," or, you know, "We feel this is a great thing. Maybe we can even do something greater at some point in the future." But, you know, that's why I see the Diversity and Equity Community Committee helping us avoid any kind of difficulty in the future or something like this. So thanks again for your participation on that committee, Josh. Any other Select Board comments?
No.
Okay, all right. So then let's, it's 7:30. Is that the time for our hearing? Or let me just see.
Yeah, we, at the last meeting, we stayed at 7:30. But it's technically not a public hearing, so you're not obliged to start it right at 7:30. You can continue with the agenda or you can go right into that.
Oh, okay.
We've got some of your waiting, why don't we?
Yeah, because we're just, this is a town manager's report. So why don't we continue the tree hearing for 723 Sheik Road. At the Board's last meeting, the appeal of this tree hearing, you know, was a topic of discussion. And since that meeting, updated information and recommendations have been provided by the DPW Director and the Tree Warden. And they're attached the agenda. The DPW Director, Sean Van Duzen, and Tree Warden, Leah Gregoroff, are in attendance to explain further the recommendations they made. And so let's, I guess, we can start with, you know, we had some questions. I guess we'll start with Sean. Is that a good place, Lynn, to start?
Do you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so I know you...
So I was able to meet with the applicant last week and took a closed driveway. There was the one tree, which is a black oak, 30 inches. I think it was given to you, an update report. So if the dirt cut is given to the applicant in the, in the, in the area that they want to build, there's inevitably going to be an impact on the root structure of that tree, as well as likelihood of where the house is being proposed, that there'll be an impact on the root structure. So I think that, that given that information, there will be an impact on that tree likely for this house to be built. But there will not be an impact on the, on the other two trees. So my recommendation, as you guys can see in the summary, would be to allow the applicant to cut the tree, to install a driveway, to run utilities in approximately the same area, which does give good sightlines. And then in turn, to do what we had done, I think it was a year and a half ago, and had the individual pay for the planting of trees at 1.25 the diameter, which was what we had done at EverSource when they were attempting to gain access to their substation with a truck they couldn't fit. So I don't know if you guys have any additional questions. But that was, anyway, that was my recommendation. There's, there is an efficiency on that oak tree, which Leah called out, including one of the leaders. So it's not a perfect tree by any means. But I think that the construction will likely have an impact in some manner. In which case, taking it out would be the end of the world.
All right, so Sean, the only question I had is, in terms of the utilities, was there other places along the property line? It's 167 feet wide. Is there other places where those utilities could be brought into the property?
Yeah, so there is some movement you could have. But we would have to move the driveway up much further away from where the proposed house site's going to be. So that is a possibility. But even with that, there's a chance that the root structure of that tree is going to be harmed during construction where it borders the private property, into the private property.
Okay, because the, I mean, the house seems set back pretty far. I'm surprised that the root structure would interfere.
So it is hard not to see the layout. But where the house is proposed is not that far away from the leader of that tree. At least I don't have a plank in front of me, I'm sorry. So there is the ability to put the driveway somewhere else and then run utilities elsewhere. That is possible. I'm just saying that if, in the area that, where the driveway is being proposed, that they showed me, there would be an impact on the root system. And that's where the existing sewer connection is. There could be another sewer connection made elsewhere, another water connection. It would just be more difficult and more costly.
Okay, all right. So the actual house itself isn't, wouldn't have to be moved, but just the driveway would be impacted and utilities?
I can't speak to the design of the house because it's in front of me. But I think things would change if the driveway was to move that far to the west.
Okay. Are you all set?
I don't have anything more to add unless you guys have more questions.
Yeah.
Tom, I have a question.
Yes, Mark.
Sean, you commented on the planting formula of 1.25 times the diameter of the 30-inch oak.
I think so, yeah.
And I, I thought we had always talked in terms of circumference and...
I think that that's what I had used as interim tree warden. As the multiplier for EverSource. What you guys want to do is entirely up to you. That was just something that we had done prior.
Yeah, because Leah mentions it in hers. She goes into more detail.
Yeah, and that's what I wanted to make sure we were, we were looking at. Because, again, that was, what we got from the tree warden was different from that.
So Leah is proposing a whole bunch of new regulations that we voted in in terms of the bylaws or at least the regs. So we have used the previous multiplier that I had used with EverSource last year. It was two Octobers ago. Because there had been some questions set. You guys have the ability to use whatever multiplier you want or not at all.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, then we can ask Leah if you could just summarize your report in terms, and it sounds like the calculations for replacement if this, removal of this tree was approved.
Yeah, are you guys all able to hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So in my letter, I did touch on the other oak and the other eastern red cedar, as we kind of discussed last time, and how I still, my opinions on those remain the same in the sense that I believe that they should stay. And that should be the fate of those two. Regarding that 30-inch black oak that we've been discussing since opening the conversation, I do agree that I think that the tree is in fair condition. It has moderate risk rating. You know, as this site currently stands, there is potential for that risk rating to go up if there were to be development, household, kids underneath the tree. As with any tree, the risk rating would go up because the risk of an impact goes up. So, you know, and then calling out that... So, you know, and then calling out that lone leader, it is a substantially large leader, so I do feel that if we were to try to prune that one off to help with it structurally, we really wouldn't leave much left, left to the tree. And then in that sense, it, it would have a really tough time coming back. I can't say that it wouldn't and would survive having that pruned, but I don't think that that's a high chance. So, due to that, I did go back and find the 2022 ruling made by Sean when he was interim Director that called out that 1.25% replacement. So with this being a 30-inch diameter tree, that times 1.25 came out to 37.5 inches of tree diameter total. I then divided that out to get 12, 25 inches of tree total if we were to purchase 1.5 inches of trees. So I did the 37.5 divided by 1.5, got the 25 trees. I found our most recent invoice for the cost that the town paid for 1 and 1/2 inch trees, and that was $220 per tree at 1 and 1/2 inches diameter. So multiplying that 220 by 25 trees, that estimated cost came out to $5,500. I then also bought our invoice from Arment Trucking, who we used to plant their trees in the fall. We planted 51 trees. It was kind of nice how that almost rounded out to be exactly double of what the 25 trees total would be. So I then divided the 17,554.16, that came out to about $8,700 for the actual process of planting the 25 trees. I then added the figure of the tree cost and the tree planting cost, and that came out to $14,200 total. So that's how I got those figures. I personally would think that if, I think it would be easiest if we were to move forward with requiring any level of replanting, that, you know, the way I had done it with a different situation is I had purchased the trees and then ended up charging the person who I purchased the trees for, and they reimbursed the cost of those trees, and then had Arment Trucking charge directly to that person as well to have them offset the cost of the planting. And I think that worked out pretty well last time, so that is just what I had done, and it worked out well. So that was my suggestion there.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for all the work you put into this. It does make it clearer for us. Anyone on the board have any questions for Leah? No? Okay. So then, Mr. Fitzgerald, having heard these numbers, does that make a change to your request, or?
Yeah, I've prepared some remarks. The first thing that I think I want to be clear about is Sean started his conversation talking about the applicant, but he means the future buyer of the property-
Okay.
-who will build the home, who is not the applicant. So, so he's confused, and he, he really wasn't speaking much to me when we went to the site. He was speaking to the applicant and the guy who's going to build the home, and that's Mr. Lucier. And that's a huge, huge point. I am the applicant. Good evening. My name is William M. Fitzgerald, Jr. I live at 62 Fairway Drive, Long Meadow, Massachusetts. I am the sole owner of the property at 723 Shaker Road and the sole petitioner requesting the removal of trees in the tree belt. The background summary of Mr. Van Dusen's posting tonight is mistaken, as I just laid out, but we did go over the facts of the future, of the future construction of the home, and that is largely correct. It belongs in the, in the location of the previous driveway. It will be impacted. The one tree in question, we were originally, as Leah pointed out, we were originally talking about three trees, and we're really down to just one tree, and that is the, the center oak, black oak in the middle of the property. And, and so Sean talks about that tree as, as how it will be impacted at its base by the, by the future, the future home. And he says, "It is my opinion that the 30-inch black oak would be weakened and go from a moderate to severe risk after the new driveway is installed. The tree should come down to allow for a new driveway installation with proper sightlines." That's the first sentence in his recommendation. Ms. Gregoroff's posting for tonight's meeting talks about the mortality of the tree from pruning the leader that overhangs my property. And she just, she just talked about that. She said, in her posting for tonight's meeting of this 30-inch black oak tree, pruning the leader that overhangs onto the property will likely result in this tree's mortality. So, this tree is not a perfect tree from the start in the canopy. Additionally, I was at the property on Sunday with Rick Mastriani. Mr. Mastriani worked for the Springfield Forestry Department for 40 years, was a certified arborist, and was the former Tree Warden for the town of Long Meadow. Mr. Mastriani immediately identified that this one tree that we're talking about in the center of the property had been pinned by EverSource. He observed decay in the leader overhanging the power lines and said to me, "That's why EverSource wants to take down this tree." And then he said the same thing as Ms. Gregoroff's posting says about the leader overhanging my property. He concluded that if you trimmed both those leaders, the tree dies. So, this issue has boiled down to one tree, and I think everybody has concluded that due to a condition of its can, its canopy, it is not a healthy tree. So we're not talking about removing a healthy tree. This tree needs to come down, and it is a tree on town property. Next, I'd like to tell you of my interaction with Mr. Van Dusen and Ms. Gregoroff since we were at the property last Wednesday. When Mr. Van Dusen left the property, left the site on Wednesday, I asked him how we would resolve this issue of this mitigation or fine. He said he wanted to review what has historically been done to EverSource. This was the second time that I've heard this phrase during this process, comparing me to EverSource. So I waited for Mr. Van Dusen to get back to me. I emailed Mr. Van Dusen on Thursday. He did not reply. I called Mr. Van Dusen in the mid-morning on Friday. I was sent a voicemail. I then received an email from Ms. Gregoroff about a vendor of Mr. Lucier's, the potential buyer of the property and builder of the home, in a pre-cutting inspection. The vendor was trying to give Mr. Lucier an estimate. Because I'm so old, I did not return Ms. Gregoroff's email. I picked up the phone, and I called her. We went over the procedural misunderstandings of Mr. Lucier's vendor, and then I asked her where things stood with regards to this fine. She told me $14,200. I told her I thought that was ridiculous, that she gave no consideration to what this construction means financially to the town and aesthetically to the neighborhood, and that she was grossly unfair. I then picked up the phone and called Mr. Van Dusen again. He answered. He said he only had two minutes before he would be on a call with the town manager. I said, "Sean, this fine is ridiculous." He said, "Well, it might end up being less." And then he said he had to go and take a call with the town manager. In the early afternoon, I called Mr. Van Dusen again. I was told he was not in the office and working from home. I then emailed him. I asked if he would refrain from his posting until we had agreed on the amount of the fine. He did not reply. I then emailed him again, saying, "I saw he posted, but I did not see a number. Was he going to post a number?" No reply. I went to these lengths to try and talk with Mr. Van Dusen so that we could both come here tonight and present an agreed-upon solution before the Select Board. I wanted the Select Board to seal the solution between us and make the board's decision an easy one. As I have relayed my timeline, you can see I was dismissed, and we failed to achieve that solution. Over the weekend, I decided to review the history of Ms. Gregoroff's tree hearing rulings. Since her employment in September of last year, she has made seven, seven rulings excluding mine. Two have been for the town itself. Those decisions were favorable. Five have been for residents of the town. Four were favorable, one was denied. On Saturday and Sunday, three of the four residents receiving a favorable decision were kind enough to speak with me. 23 Woodlawn Place, here's Mrs. Gregoroff's posting from her, from her hearing. "The resident at 23 Woodlawn Place requested the removal of a 32, white, 32-inch white pine located at 23 Woodlawn Place. The request was made due to the roots being damaged from an abutting driveway replacement project, as well as damages to the homeowner's driveway and sidewalk being uprooted by the root system. On Saturday, I spoke with, with an occupant of 23 Woodlawn Place. I explained to him my reason for calling. As the decision reads, he wanted the trees removed because of effects to the driveway. I consider this similar to my request for tree removal of, as it will affect the future home, and I asked him what he paid for a fine. He said that there wasn't any fine. We cordially talked. I thanked him for his time and left." 15 Durham Road. Here is Ms. Gregoroff's tree hearing minutes. "The resident at 15 Durham Road requested the removal of a 36-inch black oak located at 15 Durham Road. The request was made due to the tree's declining state. I approved the tree, I approved, and just a misstep of mine, the, the resident at the previous property did, was approved. I approved the removal of this tree due to its declining status and improbability of reviving it with pruning." That's the same condition we're talking about with my property. "So also on Saturday, I spoke with the occupant of 15 Durham Road. This gentleman purchased the home in August from attorney Dave Martell. I assume you all know Dave and the great things he did for this town. I approached the owner in his driveway and explained to him my reason for calling. He said he wanted the tree removed because of its declining health, that it overhung the site and threatened the home. I feel that this is a similar status to the tree affecting my property and the future home. I asked him what he paid for a fine. He said nothing. He said that he paid $250 to the reminder for legal notices, but no fine. I thanked him for his time and I left." Here's Ms. Gregoroff's notes. "The resident at 45 Robin Road requested the removal of a 14-inch Norway maple and an 18-inch honey locust located on town property in front of 45 Robin Road. The request was made due to the declining state of two trees. I approved the removal of this tree due to its declining status and the improbability of reviving it with pruning." Again, the same condition we're talking about for the tree at my property, a tree that will not survive pruning. 45, 45 Robin Road. "On Sunday, I visited the residents of 45 Robin Road. I was greeted by both the husband and the wife, and I explained why I was calling. I asked them how the trees on their tree belt became approved for removal. They said they did it online and paid $250 to the reminder for legal notices. I asked them who did their arborist opinion. They said they didn't get one. I asked them what they paid for a fine. They said there wasn't one. They said they had previously requested a removal a few years earlier, but they were denied by the Tree Warden. One time they're denied, one time they get it, no fine, no arborist. I've paid for surveying, an arborist- and the reminder fee. Surveying, an arborist, and the reminder fee. I've gone through a process that not everybody else has gone through. In the end, I will not, I will not agree to a fine for two reasons. Number one, I keep being told by the DP, I keep being told that the DPW wants to treat me equal to how they treat EverSource. I don't see the comparison. EverSource is a billion-dollar corporation. I am a private town resident. EverSource has butchered our tree belts and left us with potholes. I am trying to bring permit fee income to the town, new tax revenue to the town, and approve the curb appeal of the neighborhood by a new home. I believe the amount of the proposed fine is less than what the fees and taxes will achieve for the town. I feel that the approved tree removal requests that I have outlined, where trees were removed free of charge, are equal to mine. They are without fine, and any decision to fine me for the removal of this lone tree in question and make me pay for its removal is inconsistent with how my fellow residents have been treated. I believe that such a decision to fine me and make me pay for the removal will be arbitrary and capricious." Second reason I, I will not pay this fine. Second, I feel that agreeing to any fine sets a bad and dangerous precedent. By the board's own admission, this is new ground for the Select Board. If the town is allowed to fine residents, like they're trying to do to me, for legal removal of trees, then only residents with the financial capacity to pay the fines will be able to remove them, and the less wealthy residents of the town will be disadvantaged. In my opinion, agreeing to this fine would promote a path to injustice. In closing, I would like to say this. I've been trying to exit this property for 20 years. In that time, I have rejected potential buyers for allowed by right uses, such as daycare, churches, group homes, and by builders who I disrespected, believed unscrupulous, and just looking for a fast buck in this town. I have always been searching to leave my neighbors with a better and more attractive neighborhood, and I am now lucky enough to have that buyer. Tim Lucier is a second-generation Long Meadow builder. His father's craftsmanship is all over this town. Tim's early career was spent building homes on Martha's Vineyard. He built a home for Catherine Graham. He recently finished a large project in Southwick. Tim lost his first wife to cancer eight years ago. He has reconnected with a friend from his youth in Jen Wilson, also a former town resident and Long Meadow High School graduate, and together they are looking to return to their hometown-
Mr. Fitzgerald, Mr., the credibility of your buyer-
Hang on a second. It's five senses. May please be allowed the remainder of this time.
I'd like you to wrap it up.
I will wrap it up. He is, they are looking to return to their hometown, construct a new home, and be amongst friends and family. I believe they are right buyers for this property. I'm lucky to have found them. I believe what they construct will be, will add curb appeal to the neighborhood. So this is meeting number two between us. We've reached a point where the rubber meets the road. I am asking the Select Board to move forward with a decision on my appeal. I respectfully ask that a member of the Select Board propose a motion that the town remove this 30-inch black oak tree at the center of the town tree belt located at 723 Shaker Road at the town's sole cost and expense, and that it be done so without penalty of a fine to myself. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. There's a few things that we should discuss. One is, you know, the board, you know, we don't, in order for this town to run effectively, we rely on a lot of volunteers and a lot of department heads. And so, when the Tree Warden makes a decision, and all of those decisions were made by the Tree Warden without consulting us, obviously, you know, we just assume, we hired them, they do a good job. If there's a problem, we'll hear about it. When something goes from the Tree Warden's level- When something goes from the tree warden's level to the board, in the case of this appeal, right, you're appealing to a board that develops policy for the town. So you always run the risk, when you bring up an issue to a policymaking board, that a policy could develop. And you're saying, like, all of a sudden, it seems like there's this policy about how to replace a tree that's cut down, and so, you know, you weren't expecting that, you know, it was something that we didn't have any prior notice of, but that's what happens at this level, you know, and like, maybe that's why no one, it's never come up to this level, is that it? Now, in your statement, there's a few things, and I know other board members may want to comment, but you talked about similarities, and you talked about similarities between homes that had established driveways in your property.
So we build the home and establish the driveway, then we come back in six months?
I believe I'm talking, sir. I don't want to have to get a gavel, but I am talking.
Tom, I met you on January twenty-ninth at the property. You told me you were voting no. You told me you were voting no.
You're out of order. Please move back, move back from the microphone. You're out of order. Thank you. So, you know, the, sort of looking at an established driveway and comparing and saying it's similar to a non-established driveway, I have a little bit of difficulty with it. When you talk about pruning, you know, is an issue, you know, we trust our tree warden to advise which trees can be taken down and what kind of pruning can be offered. You know, you sent, there's a threat into the home, but the home is quite a ways away from this tree. It is close to the driveway, we've had that, and the, so, you know, this is, there's a few things, you know, and, you know, I know you're trying to make, you know, make a very nice home in town, and I can respect that, you know, but some of the arguments I find a little bit weak, and our tree warden is not on trial here, as far as I'm concerned. I don't know if other members of the board have any comments, or, yes?
First, we're, the reason we're in this situation is because there was an objection. All the other precedents, the precedent isn't binding, what the tree warden does, it's a case-by-case basis, but we are in a different situation because of the objection. But I think we're in a, we as a board are, I know this is an issue of first blush for us, but we're penalizing Mr. Fitzgerald for trying to do the right thing here, I think is what I'm having an issue with. He could have put a driveway up, and that would have killed the tree. Or, I think, and maybe Lynn knows this off the top of her head, my knowledge of tree law, you can cut up to your tree, your property line. So, I don't know if we've ever had that come up, but that could be trimmed, that branch I was hanging over, which apparently is going to kill the tree. An Eversource obviously could cut the other way, but just that back limb hanging over the house could be cut right through the property line. You always have a right to do that, at least for private neighbors, I'm not sure on the town. So, now, maybe this tree was going to go around, go down anyway, but I'm worried that because Mr. Fitzgerald has come to us trying to do the right thing, gotten permission, asked for permission, not forgiveness, asked for forgiveness, the tree might have died, or it could have been killed because of the driveway going up. Now, all that being said, I am a little, I don't like being threatened to be sued, one, but apparently there's no middle ground here, and I understand that there was some, maybe a lack of back and forth with the town, but to come up and say, "I'm not doing anything," I think is an unfortunate position to take. But I am sympathetic, and I know we're in a different position because there was an objection, but I am sympathetic to this, that the way this came before us, we've, we're going beyond what we need to do. I could see a lesser multiplier. I don't think that, it is our tree, it's our town tree. I think if it's going to be cut down proactively in order to make money on the lot, I think it does make sense to me to put up some trees, maybe a lesser multiplier, that's just my thought, but, and also, I don't think it's a fine, because this is, it's a transactional relationship, it's certainly not a fine, but that's my thought. And I'm glad we're down to just talking about one tree, but, you know, it's my normal word salad, but I want us to make sure that we're not attacking the guy who asked us to do something, rather than just doing it.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm glad that this process has led us to discussing just this one tree, and that we have now come to agreement, it seems like, on the other trees, so, that's good. This thirty-two inch black oak, last meeting was, you know, up in the air, what we're going to do with it, but it seems like now all the parties are agreeing that we're going to keep that thirty-two inch black oak, so now we're just down to this thirty-inch black oak. So, I would like to ask, you know, Sean and Leah, you know, some questions based off of what Mr. Fitzgerald said. So, Sean, what would you say to, you know, your response to Mr. Fitzgerald saying that, you know, he's being treated like Eversource when no one else in town has been treated like this?
Yeah, so, I think that we do, we do do this, towns do do this, it just happens to me since I've been on board, that was, that was the best and fairest way to approach it. Eversource was being treated like Eversource because they're a corporation, and we would have treated any resident the same way. And this will be coming up again, so it won't be the last time we're having this discussion. I don't feel it's a fine, I think it's pretty common practice, we call the municipalities around and find out what they do, some have a much larger multiplier than this 1.25. And I also think that this tree we're talking about, without a driveway going into it, does not become a high-risk tree. It might not be the prettiest, and it might be in a slow decline, but this complication between having this gentleman here ask the tree come down with the developers led to some of this sort of ambiguity about who we're talking to, because we have multiple people calling the office all the time. So do apologize for that, but I think that my staff did a good job communicating repeatedly with phone calls, so if you want to get out of the way, but reverting back to the, my executive summary, if there's going to be a driveway put in here, then yes, this tree will be in danger, but without the development, there wouldn't be a need to, to cut it, at least in this, in my opinion. I don't know if that's exactly what you're looking for.
No, no, that is, no, thank you. And then, Leah, Mr. Fitzgerald brought up some of these other rulings that you made, where, you know, there were not, you know, homeowners were not asked to mitigate in any way, or, you know, a multiplier was not applied to them. Could you explain to us, you know, what you see as the difference here?
Yep, so, I do, I do basically go out and do my tree inspections based on, you know, calls that I get in the office, emails from people saying that they're concerned about their tree. I go out, I fill out an inspectional form, I take photographs, you know, I note down any deficiencies in said trees, so, I do have documentation of all of said trees that were brought up by Mr. Fitzgerald. I think there is a big factor that is, you know, when you think about tree risk and you're doing a tree risk assessment, you're considering the likelihood of failure in conjunction with the likelihood of impact or the consequence of that failure. So for trees specifically, we could bring up the Twenty-three Woodlawn tree. I think if you guys are familiar with that area, I'm sure you are, there's a lot of pine trees over there that get significantly tall. I'm not saying we should be afraid of all pine trees, but when you have an insanely tall pine tree as that one, in conjunction with a, an impacted root system, you know, those combinations, being surrounded by multiple households, that sets off some tips in my mind that as a, you know, the property owner, the person who owns or manages the property that these trees are on, you know, that's certainly, in my opinion, something that we should be, as a town, you know, mitigating, you know. I can't speak to the root damage that was done by the couple households over, that was before my time, starting with the town of Long Meadow. If I had been here in that scenario, that would have been different, you know, I would have maybe addressed it in a different way and seen what could have been done to protect that root system and to keep the tree. Another example, Fifteen Durham, that was a double leader, one had split, I've got photos of some rot on the trunk, some other failures, things that were concerning, the remaining leader was leaning toward the household, so there's kind of a trend here. I also just, I always give residents the option, I let them know, this tree doesn't meet the exemption from the tree hearings, so you can either go through the tree hearing process, risk ending up somebody denying a removal and paying for the legal ad, or I can add you to our tree watch list, which I refer back to frequently, I'll prescribe either a three-month, six-month, or one-year return, I have to go back and check on a tree to make sure that it's, you know, still okay, if it's declined at all, and then I let them know if that, if it eventually reaches the point where it meets the exemption from a tree hearing, then the town could take it down. So typically what happens when I tell people this scenario, or let them know, if you take this down, there's going to be mitigation that's going to be required, they typically say, "Okay, never mind, I don't want to deal with that." So that's kind of why I think we're here now and haven't seen this previously, is because a lot of people that I have mentioned this to have kind of said, "Never mind."
Okay, and just one last question. How old do you think this thirty-inch black oak is?
That is a great question. I'd have to guess that it'd be close to a hundred. There was a, I know it varies from species, but then based on size, I can say that there was a forty-three inch silver maple that I estimated the value of, the age of, because I had to take that down. It was completely hollow inside, but based on the size, it was estimated to be a hundred and twenty years old. So I would imagine probably the oak is close to a hundred.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Tom?
Yes.
Thanks. I actually have a lot of things I wanted to say here, and I want to start out by saying that the tree is the town's tree, as are the other trees that our tree warden goes to, and one of the things we find is that when there's a tree on town property that threatens the lives and properties of others, we feel obligated to take action, because if we don't take action, we're liable for the damage it does, whether it falls on their house, their car, or somebody walking through by on the sidewalk. And so, there's a difference between a tree on town property and frankly, I don't put a whole lot of difference between a tree on town property on a tree belt versus a tree on town property in the middle of a park. It's a tree on town property, and if it's a danger, it's the town's obligation to take it down. And so, I, as Tom's indicated, we rely on the decision of our tree warden and others to look at other trees, whether it's the Woodlawn tree, Durham tree, or whatever, to say, "There's a potential liability to the town." And with that potential liability, the town has the obligation to handle it, because you handle it now, or you pay the consequences later. But if it's a tree in the middle of a park, or it's a tree on a tree belt that isn't potentially impacting anybody, there is no reason for the town to feel an obligation to take it down, no matter what condition the tree may be in. And to me, that sets the difference between a problematic tree that's threatening property or lives, and a tree that isn't necessarily problematic today, it may be later, but it isn't today. And so, when Mr. Fitzgerald came to us, the question is, would we be willing to accommodate a resident because they're, or a landowner, because they're trying to put in, you know, a betterment of the property? My initial take is, we'd be willing to accommodate it, but frankly, why are we cutting down perfectly good tree? And if we're going to cut down that tree, I'd like to see that person, you know, compensate the town by planting the like number of trees. And if you recall, two weeks ago, I was well above the 1.25 multiplier. I was talking about twice that, in fact, you know, given the recommendation, I'm still good with that. It is not a fine. Josh commented on that, and we heard the term, "It's a fine, it's a fine." It is not a fine. It is potentially an accommodation to the town, to allow the town to compensate for taking down what is a tree that's not bothering anyone, it's not an imminent threat. So, the way I see it is, if Mr. Fitzgerald is adamant, "I'm not paying this accommodation," and I use that word, "and not a fine," don't. But the town's not going to cut down a town tree that's not in any danger, or is not subjecting danger to anybody's property or lives. And that's been, always been my understanding of the criteria for our town tree warden and the town dealing with trees on town property. Again, whether it's in the middle of Bliss Park, or it's on a tree belt, you know, and generally, there on tree belts, we have residents who say, "This tree's going to come down on my, on a car on my driveway, or across the sidewalk," or something like that. That's, that's almost a legal decision as opposed to a forestry decision. And so, my take on this is, you know, the town's saying, at least there's some of us on this board saying, "We're willing to accommodate that, but we'd like the petitioner to somehow, you know, make up for this tree we're taking down." I think the alternative is, don't take the tree down, don't pay to take the tree down, build your house around it, and if and when the tree dies, you call us up and say, "This tree is imminently danger to my property," and then the town will be obligated to take it down. But until such time, the town's not going to do that, because we don't have the budget, frankly. We don't have the money to go around cutting down trees to accommodate people who want to cut down trees, you know, we just don't have that. So, that's kind of my take. Again, I was here two weeks ago saying, "Let's go through this accommodation, I'll back off my accommodation to the 1.25 multiplier," but I'm not going to cut it back to saying the tree, town will take down a perfectly good tree just because we're being asked to do that, because the next person's going to come along and say, "We got a really good tree, but it's kind of overhanging and dropping leaves into the pool, or onto the basketball court, or onto whatever it is in the park." It's a perfectly good tree. It may not be great, it's not the best tree we had in town, but that's where I am right now, and I really have kind of done a, somewhat of a 180 here in the last two weeks, listening to what's been going on, because I thought we had an accommodation that was probably pretty acceptable to both parties, saying, you know, "We'll be glad to take down a good town tree to help the developer," but apparently we don't have that.
Okay. So, this summer, I was visiting my daughter, and she explained how they were tying some things to trees, and people came up and said, "Oh, you can't tie anything on that tree, because that's a sacred oak." And I was like, I'd never heard that term. But I got an article that I will share with the board, I knew you wouldn't have time to read it, but from Terry Weiner, who lives in Emerson, and it talks about how, you know, maple trees, which we have a lot of maples, and those are usually the ones that go down in big storms, maple trees grow fast, and they get really high, and it takes a while for oak trees to grow, but when the windstorms come, the maple trees are the ones that go down, not the oaks. They're very strong. An oak tree can live six hundred years, and it spends a lot of its life, hundreds of years, in decline. This tree, a black oak, this could easily live two hundred years, and it does, because of the way they grow, and they have cracks in the bark, different larvae get in there, and then birds traveling through the community eat the larvae, you know, especially like, you know, the, there's just, it's, it provides a lot of nutrition to the soil and to different, all different levels, and so I'll give you guys this article. So, I mean, when I first heard of this idea to cut these trees down, I clearly said, "I don't think it's a good idea, you know, the tree isn't even near its life, it's going to outlive all of us," and it... You know, the tree isn't even near its life, it's going to outlive all of us, and it, you know, oak trees are really good in sterility. So, so I, you know, when Mark brought up the thought that maybe we need to have them replace it, you know, I wasn't really that keen on it. And now it sounds like that replacement thing is going to become a big issue for us. So I guess I would say, we just not approve the appeal, and we should leave the trees, and the driveway should be moved over, and we should be all set. I know you may not all agree with that, but that's what I understand. Yes?
Yeah. Just, I, I agree with generally what the board is saying here, but to Mr. Fitzgerald's point, you know, just, just listening to the conversation, you know, I personally would be upset too, if I was Mr. Fitzgerald, in regards to the other residents that didn't have to pay anything. So it makes me think, this is a broader conversation that the board needs to have from the perspective of actually building out a policy when this happens. We don't really have a true policy in place right now. And we're all residents, like, this is the last thing that I want, like, I'll see at the grocery store, you know, I don't want to be, I want to make things work for residents. I want to work with our residents. And I, to Mark's point, I think it's, bless you, I think it's a fair one to say, this is a, it's a town tree. If the town were to remove it, there should be some sort of give and take here, where you're working with the town as well, because it is a town tree. But I just want to be clear to the board that I think this is a bigger issue, issue that we need to handle moving forward in terms of addressing these types of scenarios, because just like dog hearings, just like the tree hearings, these are things that weren't happening in the town previously. Like, we just weren't, we weren't doing a lot of these, because we just weren't following the rules. I wasn't on the board, but now that I'm on the board, I'm seeing all these things bubble up, because the town wasn't doing things properly. So I can see both sides, I just, for me personally, it's difficult to, again, I don't view this as a fine, I just think we need to be reasonable to Mr. Fitzgerald, while being reasonable to other residents that are going through this in the future and in the past. And here we are today with an, with an appeal on something that the town didn't ask other residents to do. And I just, I just have, I just have a problem with that process. But I also believe, I also tend to agree with Mark and others talking about, you know, it is a town tree. So I do think we should be, you know, working together and coming together on trying to do the right thing for the resident and the town, but I, we shouldn't be looking at this as a fine either to the, to the resident, or to the town, or vice versa. So that's my thought, I think we need to have a bigger conversation on this, but I do agree with what the board is saying as well.
Tom?
Yes?
I'd like to just respond. Dan, I respect your comments. A couple of things I'd like to comment on. We do have a policy, we have extensive policies with respect to trees, and we've been handling them. The reason it doesn't come to the board is because generally the policies have handled them along the way. You know, I think Leah made a great comment, when she said, when homeowners are usually told, well, you know, you'd have to make a replacement value because there's, they back off. And that's part of the policy, and that's working. And what you don't see is when the policy works, because they don't come, it doesn't come to the board. So I think there are policies, and they are, they are working, you know. So when you say the town wasn't doing, isn't doing things properly, I have to disagree. I think the town is doing things properly. I think that this is a case where the petitioner was concerned, because when he got the answer, instead of backing off, he said, well, I'm just going to appeal it. Frankly, I'm disappointed that we're at a position that we are in, and we can't come to some reasonable accommodation. I'd almost like to ask Mr. Fitzgerald if he's heard, after he's heard what's going on here, if he's rethinking his position of, I'm not paying an accommodation, or to, you know, to replace or offer replacements for the tree that they would like to, he would like to cut down in order to facilitate the sale of the property, or whatever it is.
Mark, just, you're talking to me as if I'm throwing the town under...
No, no, I don't mean that.
That's not what I'm suggesting.
I understand, Dan, I don't mean to do that.
You've been on the board sixteen years, sixteen-plus years, and we don't have tree...
Because the system's working.
Because we haven't been going through the system properly...
That's not true.
All the time, Mark.
That's not true. That's not true.
I'm sitting here agreeing with you.
Okay.
I've been agreeing with your points, I've said that.
We go through the process, you know, and occasionally we have people who come forward and say, the process says there's an appeal potential at the select board. This is part of the process, you know. And so we, we're now looking at this as saying, you know, how do we try to do, what you've indicated is, you know, we'd like to accommodate our residents, but yet, you know, we're not, I don't believe the town should pay to cut down a town's tree that's not in imminent danger of life or property. That's my personal opinion.
And I agree with you.
Thank you. You know, so the question is, how do we, how do we move from here? Because otherwise, we're going to have a petitioner walk away annoyed, you know, and frankly, we're not going to end up being, you know, being able to meet the requests of our citizens. And so I just think it's unfortunate that we've gotten to a immovable object and irresistible force kind of discussion here, because that's where we are. And I understand Mr. Fitzgerald is not happy with us, but, you know, I thought two weeks ago, we were moving toward a, an accommodation. But it sounds like we're not, I don't know. And Tom, I'd like to ask Mr. Fitzgerald if there's any possibility of an accommodation of this kind.
Well, Mr. Fitzgerald...
Having heard our position that, you know, we see a, we see a distinct difference between the other cases you identified, and I'll just say again, imminent danger to life or property versus this, and the fact that it's a town tree. Having said that, is there any accommodation at all possible? Can he...
Yes, please. Yes, I thought you heard me say, you could come up.
I've got three things to say, Mr. Gold, about some of the things you said. Number one, why are we here? So we're not here because every town resident has a right to an appeal. That is not Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 87. You are mistaken. The tree warden throughout Massachusetts has unilateral power. If she makes a decision in a tree hearing meeting, there is no right to appeal other than to sue the town. The only reason we are here tonight is because there's a provision in Chapter 87 that if a town resident, only one, writes a letter to the tree warden saying that they object to the removal of a tree, the decision by the tree warden is taken out of her hands. And the applicant's recourse is to a mayor in the event it's a city, and to the select board it's in the event of a town. So you're mistaken as to how we get here today. We're only here today because Marinelli wrote a letter opposing, opposing the removal of these two black oak trees.
But that's part of the process.
It's, it's, I agree.
Okay, so the process is working through, that's all I want, that was my point.
But the huge point there, Mr. Gold, is that if the decision, if Marinelli never writes the letter, and Grigorov says, you can't take the tree down, there's no appeal. I'm only here because of the Marinelli letter, and how the law provides for an applicant to say, I appeal, I appeal. It's like a, it's like a de jure appeal. And, and that's why we're here tonight. So, so other town residents who just appear before the, the tree warden, if they show up and she denies them, they have no rights. They have zero rights.
They can sue the town, that is an appeal. You cannot say there's no appeal.
Okay, I agree with you, Mr. Levine. They can sue the town, but they have no procedural right within the body of the town.
But that's not the town's decision, that's the state's decision.
We can't change the law.
I understand that, but he's, he's saying that I'm here tonight because of...
Could you answer his question?
Yes, sir. So the other thing that I don't follow is that there's, don't take the limb down because there's no home there. But if we build, we plan on, the buyer plans on building a home. So a home will be there. Why, why would, why, what is the logic in making the gentleman build the home, and then come back, and then ask for the tree to come down?
The logic is financial for the town. Strictly financial.
I understand.
The town, in my opinion, and it's my opinion only, the town's not going to go out and spend however much it costs to cut down a tree, and they're not cheap, as you know, you know, preemptively or prophylactically, but we will do it to prevent a potential liability.
Okay. So we're talking about, we're talking about removal of the, of the tree. You know, this is a, this is a power line situation. It will be expensive. Between the expense of removing the tree, and the revenue that the new home brings, is there any, is there any leeway on your side of the table that $14,200 is, is an unjust, an unjust fine?
It's not a fine, it's an accommodation.
An unjust, unjust accommodation on a residential property owner? I understand that the town would want to have the right to have a heavy hand on somebody like Eversource to prevent the butchering of tree belts throughout the town. But when you're talking about one individual resident, not everybody has the financial wherewithal of Eversource.
My personal opinion is that we should treat Eversource and our residents the same. I think Mr. Van Duzen said that. That's my personal opinion, that's the way it should be, because we should have one procedure, one policy, and one accommodation remedy for everybody. Because if we start differentiating, we're going to get people saying, well, I want this treatment, and I want that treatment. You can't, you can't, you can't deal with multiple accommodations. On the other hand, you know, you're saying is $14,000, you know, I will tell you, I read this, and the problem with the $14,200 is, it's what we call prevailing wages and town costs. I think the potential property owner said at some, well, I buy them in bulk, and we know that that could potentially happen. I'm very surprised that everybody's saying, what we want to do is have the town, you know, just put the money in the town's tree, tree budget, and let the town take care of it. My personal opinion and my expectation the last time was, go plant fifteen or twenty trees around town, save you a ton of money, and, you know, work with the DPW, but apparently the DPW doesn't want to do that. I recognize that this is more money than I would have expected, to plant 25 trees at an inch and a half in diameter, but that's the cost of prevailing wages.
Would it be, would the board agree that if it gave me permission to take down the tree at my expense, we'd have a fair accommodation amongst ourselves?
Well, I'd just like to say that it's not the tree that's the problem, we're not just losing a tree, we're losing what that tree gives to the ecosystem. That tree provides a lot of life to a lot of different things. And you're saying, well, forget about all the life, forget about the birds and all the organisms that count on the leaves from that tree, insignificant. Let's talk about how much it was going to be, $2,000 to cut that tree, just, but just, I'll cut it. And I don't think, you know, we're losing, that's why we have this whole process, is because we're losing, the town is losing something from the ecosystem. We're not, you know, we're not just saying, we're going to, it's going to cost us the price of the tree. We're losing this contribution to an ecosystem. That's why we have a tree committee, that's why we have, you know, a tree warden, is because these aren't just like telephone poles, they're the way, you take them out, it doesn't affect anything. These affect the birds in the area, a lot of things. So, I mean, you could make your request and see what the board says, but I...
Well, this is a, this is a unique...
I just can't answer your question. Unfortunately, the town can't let private citizens work on town properties. And, and that's, that's, the tree is town property, any more than we can have you, you know, dig a trench in the, in the park, so...
Mr. Gold, let me correct you. Ms. Grigorov gave us permission to take down the band of evergreens on town property. And she gave, she gave me permission with like four steps that I must meet. I must give her notice, I must use an insured vendor. There, you, the town, Ms. Grigorov is letting me take something down on town property. So I, I don't think you're fully informed.
Okay.
So it's back to my question, if...
I'm just questioning whether Ms. Grigorov has the authority to let you do that. That's all, just, that's my response, because my understanding is, we can't let private citizens work on town, on town properties. But, but that's to be, to be determined, and I will concede that she said, told you what she told you. I'm just, and likely you might have gone ahead and done it.
No, I haven't, I haven't done anything.
I understand that, but I'm just saying that, that I'm not sure that that authority exists, okay?
Well, I don't know, I don't know what to say.
Sean can probably jump in on this as well. And there's also a difference of scale that we're talking about here. We have people shovel the sidewalk in front of their house, but cutting a tree, that's substantial, I would strongly suggest we not have private residents do that. But Sean deals with this much more than I do.
Yeah, I think Leah was, was letting you approach those trees, like it's part of your tree belt, but if there's a major construction, we don't let residents go around town in town green and plant trees. If there is work being done in front of your house, then we do have criteria, then we work with the contractor, has to be an arborist to work on, but if that's a little bit of the gray area in front of your house, and your own tree belt, which you're required to take care of, I think Leah was probably trying to help you out. But we don't let people work around town, it's just not, not done. But, yeah, so, I think that's, that's the one circumstance. So we do have certifications, we have to have arborist license, same, similar to where if you're adding a sewer line or water line connected out of the road, we have special licenses and inspections we do when that happens, so that's the only time there's an exception.
So, so given the fact that the town's going to spend...
I've got one question.
Okay, let me, let me...
Confused by Sean's answer. Here I've been given approval by the tree warden on town stationery, that if I follow A, B, and C, A, B, C, and D steps, I can take the tree down. Are you saying tonight that that's no longer the case?
And your, in front of your tree belt, I believe it's allowed, similar to the way we allow construction to happen underneath the town road, connect to water, sewer, but you couldn't work in other places in town, on the green, for instance, or someone else's tree, like front area of the house.
And speaking to the issuance that I gave, was a letter issued under Chapter 87, Section 4 of the Mass General Law, which reads, "Tree wardens shall not cut down or remove, or grant a permit for the cutting down or removal of so on." So I've issued that letter, it was a granting of a permit for the removal in front of, on the tree belt in front of your property.
All right. So, so if I can get that, if I can remove those trees, is there a rationale for me not removing this tree? I'm going to have to have a proper vendor, I'm going to have to make sure that the town is, is insured, I'm going to have to follow the four steps that Ms., notice, I'm going to have to follow the steps that Ms. Grigorov has laid out. Is there an objection to me taking down that tree?
I think that's wherever you're...
Excuse me. Assuming that the board votes and approves that I can take the tree down, would there be an objection to me as the, as the tree cutter?
You're the landowner.
I'm going to tell you, it's moot unless you answer our question. I, are, is there a number you're willing to reach to come? Let me talk.
Okay.
You need to let everyone talk up here.
Yeah.
I, you heard me talk, I'm probably as close on your side as anybody up here. But if you say, you got up here and said, no, forget you, I'm going to do what I want, or I'm going to walk away. You said, I'm not willing to accommodate, to take any accommodation. If that's still the answer, I think we're stuck.
I'm ready to move to the middle, if there's reasonableness. And if the board can see that I'm doing a good thing for this neighborhood... um, and there's gonna be a better-than-average home on this property. And the, the, the potential buyer is the former owner.
No, we don't need to hear this. That, that's fine, you answered the question. We, we've been here talking a long time, and you can let us talk amongst ourselves. Sorry, Tom, I don't wanna.
No, no, so, I mean, so you, there's no number you'd give Josh for?
Well, he said he'd be reasonable, so I, like I, I said, I'm willing to do a lesser accommodation because I think Mr. Fitzgerald's trying to do the right thing. And I, I could throw out a number if other people are comfortable with that. But I, if, if everyone is gung ho on one point two five, um, with, then I, I won't.
Okay, and, um, Dan, were you gonna say something?
No, I, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, okay, Mark?
I'm, I'm gung ho on one point two five, but I'm not gung ho on the price that was established for that, for doing that. So, so I think, you know, again, we're gonna end up paying because that's what the town pays. You know, but the question is, what do we ask for as an accommodation? And so, to me, that's, that's a different, a different discussion, Josh. And, you know, I don't have a number in, in mind, frankly, but I think that we need to be able to buy the trees. You know, and we have a forestry line item that's planting trees, and we're looking for support, you know. In fact, we have a, or had a, a fund where people could contribute to, to, to a tree fund. So, we're, we're, the town is able to accept money into its tree fund. And, you know, I'd like to think in that a contribution to that tree fund in lieu of, you know, and, and, you know, cutting down this, this tree would, would therefore find its way to the town replanting a number of replacement trees.
So, if we, if it went into a general fund, or I shouldn't say general fund, that's a different term.
It's the forestry line item.
The forestry fund, then rather than a twenty-five tree buy, it gets part of a much bigger buy, where we get that bulk. And it's not its own contract, it's part of a larger contract, which is still overseen by our tree warden, I presume. Um, which would lower, I, I presume would lower the cost just by scale.
Maybe, maybe not. The point is, you know, I sat here thirteen years ago when we lost fifteen hundred trees and said, we need to put more money into our forestry line item, we need to have money to replant trees. And that's kind of the basis behind where, why I'm saying, you know, it would be nice to get twenty-five trees to spread around town, given the fact that my unders-, my, my belief is that if this tree doesn't die because we take it down, it's gonna die in the next five years because of the construction that they're planning to do. And so, it's better to get something out of it than get nothing out of it. And that's, that's kind of my, my approach to this for the town. Because, Tom, I understand where you're coming from. But, but my, my perception is that five to seven years from now, that tree will, will be dead and need to come down if it hasn't fallen down. And if there's construction there. So, let's see what we can, let's, let's see what we can get as an accommodation.
Yeah, I, I have no reason to believe that tree would live for another hundred years. And I believe that when you're looking at a lot, it's a hundred and seventy-six feet wide, two hundred feet deep, there's plenty of room to avoid the roots of that one tree.
I, I think the problem is, unless somebody from town tells me otherwise, you can put the tree, you can put the driveway wherever you want. As long as you got a permit, I don't think the building permit. No, no, but I, I'm saying, you can put it right next to the tree to, uh, well, certainly not.
Yes, that would be.
So, I, I probably wouldn't issue that permit for this very reason.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
So, yeah.
Aneth, you were.
Oh, I was gonna say, no, I mean, uh, you know, Mr. Fitzgerald's not arguing about the number of trees. So, if we do wanna reframe, in terms of mitigation, he's not saying, oh, I don't wanna replant twenty-five trees. He's saying, you know, I don't wanna pay fourteen thousand dollars. So, if we do reframe this and say, come up with a dollar amount and say, this is the amount that we want Mr. Fitzgerald to put into the tree fund, I mean, that might be another avenue for us to go.
That smells to me like a payoff. I hate to say that and use that word, but it, you know, the, having some logic behind it, saying it's a, we're, we're compensating for the loss of this tree based on a formula that replaces tree for tree and square inch of leaf space per square inch of leaf space. Makes me feel better beneath, even though the effect is exactly what you said. I mean, let's face it.
But I think everyone, it seems like most of the board is not comfortable with that price and saying that that might be too high. And that's why I bring this up as an alternate.
Right, yeah, no, you're, and you're right.
Solution, yeah.
But my take would be, let's play with the numbers and say, okay, the number came out, ten thousand dollars. And so therefore, we're gonna get twenty-five trees for ten thousand dollars, or whatever it is.
Right. So, the only way to, we have a reduction in price would be if there would be a way to reduce the cost of the trees. And I don't think that that's at all.
Right, yeah, and we would have to be comfortable with there being less than, you know, that multiplier in this scenario.
Right. And, and our sense in the hearing last week is that that kind of a multiplier is what other towns also do. You know, that isn't just a moment of thing, you know.
Well, I, I'm sitting here doing numbers and Josh's too, but I, my take would be to require the petitioner to purchase the trees and not plant the trees. And I still like my higher multiplier, but if we went to purchase forty trees at two hundred dollars, at two hundred and twenty dollars a tree, that's eighty-eight hundred dollars off the top of my head. You know, that, that's the kind of place where I am. You know, somebody may say something else, but.
So, go ahead, Lynn.
Yeah, I, I just, I'd wanna hear Sean and Leah on that, but just playing that out. A resident purchases trees from a nursery, a vendor, who's warranting that tree?
No, 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 the, the, the two hundred and twenty dollars a tree is our price, we're buying them. We're buying the trees.
Okay.
That's the price that Leah said. We pay two hundred and twenty dollars per, for a one and a half inch tree.
Yeah.
So, I'm saying, the, the petitioner's gonna give the town money at our price to go out and buy, in my case, I wanted to buy forty trees at two hundred and twenty dollars a tree, or forty-five trees at two hundred and twenty dollars a tree. That's how I came up with the mon-, not having the petitioner buy the tree. I, I'm taking the town's purchase price, as high as it may be, that's how I'm taking it. But I'm saying, it's the purchasing the trees, 'cause that's what we're requiring them, and the installation, the town's gonna eat. In return for petitioner cutting down the tree, that's it.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking, on our forestry budget, if we are, if we're having somebody else buy the trees for us, that would be less trees that we would have to buy, and then we could pay to install those with the money we're not paying for the trees. So, the budget would, could be flat because of that, if that makes sense.
Saying, use, use the budget.
Yeah, I get it, it's one way to look at it. Um, it's not furthering the, the gap we have right now with the, a number of shade trees that have come down and trying to make up that gap. It's just growing it. Um, and this, what communities are doing with these tree mitigation calculations is trying to, everyone's in the same position. They're trying to close that gap. And by allowing a, a tree that otherwise would stay up to come down, there, I mean, you know, that's why we're here tonight, is that you mitigate that cost, because otherwise that tree, there's no purpose for it to come down. Um, so, yes, you could do it that way, but I just want you to recognize that it's not furthering that cause. It's not making any chipping away at that tree report that you saw six months ago.
Sean, um, do you have any, have you given any credence to the idea that you, Eversource is going to cut this tree down at some point?
Um, any, any tree plant that Eversource has to go to the tree warden. And I don't know that, I've seen that in Mass recently, Leah can speak to it. Um, but I don't, I don't have any sense that they're, they're coming immediately. Um, but maybe Leah has some additional information.
Um, I don't know if this is on their radar. They did send me a circuit in town for pruning that they're hoping to do, and they're not going at all near this end of town. So, I have to imagine that it's, um, i- if it is on their radar, it's not high on their radar.
They have a hundred years, yes, Mark.
Are you willing to accept a, a motion at this point? I'm willing to try to make a motion.
I guess, are we ready for a motion? Does anybody wanna make a, a motion?
No, no, we don't talk on that.
All right. With, with the board's permission, I'd make a motion that, that we approve the removal, the, we approve the petitioner's allowance to remove the thirty-inch oak, oak tree pursuant to the conditions set forth by our tree warden and our DPW, which is those number of steps they had. In return for the petitioner contributing to our replacement tree line item for forty-five trees, which is a multiplier of two point, something, two point five X, at the town's cost of two hundred and twenty dollars a tree. That comes to a, a fee of ten thousand dollars.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Yeah, Aaron, then there.
I was just gonna say, should there be like time constraints to that? You know, just in terms of the, to the motion, just thinking.
Go ahead.
But I don't know when the property, like when they're trying to build, and I, so.
Should they be prior to this cutting, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah.
Okay.
Make that amendment, and I'll accept it.
Okay, prior to the cutting, okay. And Aneth, did you have?
Well, I, I mean, I guess, I, I wanted to ask Sean and Leah if this sounds like a good solution.
So, Sean and Leah, it will be asked, you've both been asked if you think there's a good solution, that we should move forward, Aneth?
I can always say, I can always say, I think we're gonna do pretty well with the tree plantings because, um, we are buying a bulk purchase of sixty thousand dollars of new installations going down this summer. So, I do think the numbers will come down.
Oh, okay, so that's good, all right. And Leah, any?
Yeah, I apologize, could the motion be repeated so I could, um, hear the numbers right? I think I might've misheard.
Okay.
The, the motion was that we approve the petitioner's removal of a thirty-inch white oak tree uh, at, at his expense, according to the, the conditions and processes set forth by the tree warden and the, and the DPW following the, uh, contribution of, by the petitioner to our forestry budget line item for the purchase of forty-five trees at two hundred and twenty dollars a tree.
Okay, yeah, I think, um, I think there are a lot of spots in, in town that I've called out that are, you know, in, in use of trees. And I, I think that this is gonna be a good, um, use of that.
Okay, thank you, both of you, for your comments, uh, yes.
Tom, it's your, your hearing, but I, I'd like to hear if Mr. Fitzgerald be, is amenable to that. If this is gonna end the issue, if we're gonna have to revisit this or hear about it in court, you know.
I guess I'm, I'm confused about the numbers. I agree with you that I felt that this fourteen-two was just way too high. And I'm, and as the meeting has gone on, I don't understand anything about removal and where the board stands on an individual cannot do work on town property.
That was, that was me, that, we're being told something different.
Well, I'm so, so I'm confused.
This would allow you to remove it, that processes, that's what the beginning of Mark's motion said. Pursuant to the, uh, the DPW, the tree warden, uh, processes. So, if you got a permit to remove it, like you got for the other trees, then yes, you, you could do it, is my understanding.
So, the, so the first permit I got is good. Is that correct? It, it's not being revoked?
First permit you got is for a different set of trees.
Uh, cor-, correct, correct. But I, but I'm trying to get past this, get understood that I can do removal on town property.
Apparently you can.
Okay, so the first, so I'm paying for the first, uh, set of removal. And now you want me to pay for the tree removal?
The thirty-inch oak.
Pay for that, plus pay ten thousand dollars. Is that, is that where we're headed with this mo-, if I got the math right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the motion.
To replace the ecosystem.
Is the board unwilling to recognize any kind of discount for either, one, the health of, that I'm not replacing, that, that the tree I'm replacing is not a perfect tree? Number two, is the board willing to recognize any kind of discount for the fact that the construction in this home brings substantial tax revenue to the, to the town and fee income to the town?
If you're asking me, my personal opinion is, till that house is built, there's nothing there. The one, the one issue has nothing to do with another issue, in my opinion. That's my opinion, and I, and other people can disagree with me, but, but.
I respect, I respect.
On the other hand, if you're looking for, you know, if Sean Van Dusen's saying, we're buying sixty thousand dollars worth of trees, and we may get a better price than two hundred and twenty dollars a tree, you know, I'm more than happy to say, if we get the trees for a hundred and sixty dollars, you're only paying forty-five trees at a hundred and sixty dollars. You know, my goal is to get the number of trees. You know, but I don't know that, could, you know, and I'm willing to cap it at two twenty. And maybe that should be the, the vision to the motion, to cap at two twenty, but represent the actual cost of the trees. And that's the only, that, that's a potential accommodation for you that will help the town get, get a cheaper price on trees.
Well, I, I, at the end of the day, I'm just trying to get my head around a total number, and I, and.
But, but your, your understanding of what's on before this board is correct.
Right.
Okay, so I have the right, I, I gotta, I gotta pay to take that first set down. I gotta pay to pay this set down. I think, I think the removal of this tree is a, is a really significant cost due to location, due to power lines. I think it's, it's very, very expensive. Um, and, uh, I'm looking for some considerate, some, some, some movement off of your ten thousand dollars because of the removal costs that I'll face. And I'm asking the board, is, as much as you say, there's no home there, so I don't, I don't believe in anything, we're, we're not here tonight, we're, we're not here these last two weeks, we're doing all this work because nothing's gonna happen. I mean, this will happen, it will be a significant twenty-four hundred square foot ranch. Um, is, is the board's opinion, no, you get nothing for what you're doing for the, for, uh, for improving the neighborhood and, and putting tax revenue in the town's pocket?
We're basically talking about trees. And if you have a problem removing those yews and various fir trees, you can, you don't have to remove those. We're not asking you to remove any trees, you're requesting removal from us. And it sounds like the best deal is that if, if, if you agree to replace, you know, a certain number of trees, and we say, this is what we believe the price will be, but according to Mr. Van Dusen, the price could come down if we buy a large lot of trees. So, you know, you, you may get a bargain, but we don't know what that would be. But it's that, that would be part of this, the way this would work, right? If he purchases forty trees, if the price of trees goes down, he would pay.
I'll be glad to modify it to say at a, at a price not to exceed two hundred and twenty dollars a tree, but based on the actual price of the town.
I wanna accommodate, I wanna accommodate the board, but there's, there's a lot of moving parts in what you're, in what you're suggesting. And we're trying to do a closing, we're try, you know, now we're talking about, uh, there's gonna have to be some setback for something unknown in the future. I'm trying to do something, I, I'm trying to come to a practical end to this. And, um, there's an ex-, and I'm hearing, I'm hearing nothing because it's, right now it's just an invisible home. Uh, and I'm hearing that I have to pay for removal of the, of the, of everything.
That's, that's your choice, this time, so.
Yes, I'm not disputing that, I'm not disputing that. Um, I'm just trying to add it all up in my head.
So, the answer is yes.
It's getting to be a big number, I think that.
My answer, my answer is yes, I don't know what the other.
I think that if the, if the, that if the board is looking for, um, some kind of contribution. you know, I'm, I'm more in the lines of facing all of these costs and nothing, no accountability, no, nothing in return for what I bring to the town. I'm thinking like, I don't know, I don't know how you want to do the math, but I'm thinking like, how about five grand?
Well, that's the first time we've gotten a number from you. Personally, I'm not in a negoti, I'm not here to negotiate. This isn't a negotiation, in my opinion, but, but I appreciate you putting out a number. I mean, like I said, the expenses of cutting trees is your expense because it was your request. So to say the town ought to accommodate you with that cost, if you don't want to spend the money, don't spend the money, it's time, don't cut the trees down. It's that simple.
I understand, Mr. Gold. I just applaud you because a few minutes ago you were telling me I couldn't cut the trees down.
I, I don't believe you can. I don't believe you can, but if the DPW's saying you can, then they, they run the place.
Yeah.
I don't think town residents should be going around cutting trees.
I don't know.
Well, let me just ask Sean a question. So Sean, if we look at 40 tree replacement and we get a large purchase of trees this year, is there any way that it could come close to that 5,000 figure that he's discussing?
There's no way.
I, I can't, I can't speak to that.
Okay. It's kind of a tough question, but I just thought I'd ask it just in case. All right, thank you. You don't have to, you don't have to elaborate.
Just as a final point of order, we, I think we should vote, but I'll just say, this is a negotiation, we're absolutely negotiating. You started at negative, you started at the town paying. We were at 14-2. It came down and you did not move. We bid against ourself, which you're not supposed to do in a negotiation. But that's because I, I thought we were doing the right thing for a resident, and I wish you would understand that and give us some credence to what we're doing. Those are the town's trees, we're really, we're trying to help. I would, I would do 30 trees capped at 220. That would be $6,600. That would be, that's a negotiation, that's almost in the middle of where we start. So I'm gonna vote no on the motion, because I, I would rather do that. But I, just putting it out there.
Okay, all right. And I'm gonna vote no on the motion, because I think the trees should live. Do we want to call for a vote?
I, I still...
We can call for a vote and then have a second motion.
Well, I was gonna say, I'm still confused about whether he can cut down the trees or not. I mean, it seems to me like he cannot.
Right.
I, I don't know, I mean, there seems to be an issue with that, that doesn't make sense to me, that he would be able to...
So I think I can clarify that.
Yeah.
I think I, the question that was asked is whether he could cut down the tree. My initial response, when I looked at Mark, was no, he can't. Leah clarified that under Mass General Law, she can issue a permit with conditions. Some of those conditions are insurance, the vendor on file, so that's very different than a residential homeowner going out and cutting down this 45-foot-tall tree versus hiring an arborist to come in who's specifically trained to do this. So I think the, the difference there is in the permit that Leah issues with the conditions set forth.
Yeah, so my boilerplate conditions, which I can guarantee in the letter issued for these removals, is that the insurance must be submitted to me from the tree company or the arborist prior to any work. The certification, the arborist certification number, who's either doing the work or who will be overseeing the work, needs to be submitted to me, and then the ANZ 300, ANZ A 300 best management practices need to be followed during the removal process.
Does that answer your question, Fenee?
Yes.
Very good, okay.
Given the proximity, there may also be a police detail required, just where it is when it comes down, but that's something... Leah, do you, do you sort that out in the permit as well?
I didn't call that out. I don't know if, depending on the way they fell it, I was thinking, I was envisioning it due to the power lines, they would probably fell it into the property, and that's why I didn't call that out. I didn't think that they would go more towards the road, but I guess, you know, they may need to park along the side, in which case there would need to be a detail, I would assume, due to the traffic of the road.
Tom, I'd like to call a question.
Okay, so we have called for question. All those in favor of the motion on the table, raise your hand, yes, aye? Okay, those opposed? Okay. Are we looking for another motion?
I, I move that we accept the tree hearing appeal request to take down the 30-foot oak tree at 723 Shaker Road and require a accommodation of the replacement of 30, I forgot the name of the, 1.5-inch trees capped at $220 per tree prior to the 2024 planting season.
Second.
Okay, second. All right, any further discussion here? All right, you had a comment, what was that?
For a grand total of...
$6,600. Oh, and, yeah, and sorry, remove the, as we changed the motion before, the prior motion, yeah. Remove the tree with the requirements set forth by the tree warden.
Okay, and then that cap price. So, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, opposed? All right.
Tom, I applaud your consistency.
Oh, thank you.
I have one, now that we've ended, I have just one thing. Mr. Gold said that the, the tree policies are working because it's causing neighbors to back off. I still think that at the end of the day, throwing a price tag on residents, especially residents without wherewithal, is an injustice, and I hope that you would take that into consideration in any policies that you put forth in the future.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sure there's folks in town that say that cutting down mature, healthy oaks is an injustice also. So, all right, we will move on to our town manager's report. I believe that's next.
Yep, thank you. So, an update on a grant that we just applied for. The Land and Water Conservation Fund grant, also referred to as LWCF, was submitted a couple of weeks ago, worked on by the Planning and Community Development Director. It was submitted for replacement of the playground at Bliss Park. The playground was identified in the Active Recreation Area Conditions Assessment and the Open Space and Recreation Plan. Additionally, coupled with other grants for Cooley Brook and Bliss and Laurel Park, and the investment in the Reynolds Bliss Pool, we feel we have a strong application. The LWCF is a 50% reimbursement grant. The total cost for the playground with rubberized surface, ADA benches and tables, along with site drainage improvements, is $1.6 million, and the town's LWCF request is 50% of that cost for a total of $824,324. A bond authorization, bond authorization will be prepared for the annual town meeting on May 14th. This is the town's first application to LWCF in 30 years. Greenwood Center, we were moving full steam ahead on that project. The low bidder for painting was JB Cleaning and Painting Service. The bid was $35,280, which is about $40,000 less than our preliminary quote that we had received as we were putting estimates together. As you may have noticed tonight, when you drove in to the high school, the lighted sign on top of Long Meadow High School has been partially burnt out for a bit, and DPW's been aware of this. It's been a reoccurring issue over the last five years. The town's contract electrician's working on it. The ballast and drivers for those lights are difficult and dangerous to access. They're reworking the lighting to be more reliable and serviceable. The components that often require replacement are being relocated to an accessible location to decrease any future downtime of those fixtures. As of last week, the electrician was still awaiting parts, and it will be fully operational as soon as possible. Magnolia Circle, those, just as a reminder, this was a road that suffered significant damage this summer due to water inline breaks, and we just signed a contract with Fussin O'Neil for the design of the water sewer and stormwater improvements that are now necessary as a result of those main breaks that occurred. The work area is Magnolia Circle and Primrose Drive. This engineering contract amount is $72,000. The design will be completed and the project put out to bid in May of '24, with anticipated construction in the summer and fall of 2024. And for road resurfacing projects in 2024, I do want to draw attention and expand on what DPW had in their monthly report. They did prepare an invitation for bid that's going to be released by the procurement manager very soon. There are quite a few road projects listed in this invitation for bid for our spring and summer 2024 construction. I'm not gonna go through the full list here unless you think I need to, but it is posted online, and I'll update at a later meeting once we have bids come in, so, and then we'll have a project schedule. And we've had a lot of grant success, but unfortunately, this one is an unsuccessful application that we had. I had submitted a grant to the Mass Office on Disability for an ADA grant opportunity, and this would have been to offset some of the funds for the three elementary school playgrounds. Unfortunately, we were not successful. It was a $250,000 grant ask, the largest amount that they would award, and we did not receive it. But I do have a follow-up call with them scheduled in a couple of weeks to learn about how we could be successful in the future, because I do think this is a great grant opportunity. We have a lot of ADA improvements that we really should be working on, and this, this could help to that effort. And then last week, the MSBA held a designer selection panel board meeting. I took part along with the superintendent, the school committee chair, and our OPM, and we interviewed the applicants who had submitted designs for the architectural design for the middle school. There were three firms that had bid on this project. We went through and ranked them after discussion, and the top architect was Jones Witset Architects, JWA. And so now the town's OPM and MSBA will begin negotiating a contract. This is the same architect at the East Long Meadow High School. And this is a recent success, the, with the help of the towns insurer, Maya. Water sensors had been installed at the elementary schools over the summer. This was a project led by the facilities team at the DPW and with the assistance of Maya. The sensors are provided free of charge, and they're put in areas where we've had problems. And then recently, one of those water sensors activated at Wolf Swamp School overnight, and it saved us from a potential catastrophe that would have caused significant damage. So that was, that was averted. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, it's, it's really good that the insurance company gave us the water sensors. You know, that's a nice thing, we save some, some money. Mark, Gold, you had...
Yeah, just a few questions. Lynn, the land conservation grant for Bliss Park, two questions. One is, if we don't get it, does that mean we're gonna go off for the full $1.6 million to bond? And secondly, is, you know, I recall that that park, as it is, was a gift to the town at some point. Were there any stipulations about keeping that, some of those equipment as part of that original gift?
The playground was a gift.
Right.
Right. Not that we found, no.
Okay. I think it was Milton Bradley, in fact, at the time, but I'm not sure. Okay, that's, that's fine.
Yep, and regarding what our intention would be for that bond authorization, I think we'll have to have a conversation about that. I think our goal is, we're gonna, we would get the grant and move forward that way. If we don't get the grant, then we'll, we'll have to talk about what we would want to do there.
Okay, and two, two other questions. One is, can you just comment for people what is in our Chapter 95 plus supplemental capital for, for street repaving, what our budget is?
Yeah.
I think I know, but I think people should hear that.
Yep, coupled with all those sources of funding, it's about $1.5 million.
And, and money doesn't go as far as it used to in paving, so...
It does not, not even close.
We're talking just a couple of miles at most of paving.
Yep, and, you know, as you recall, that pavement management, pavement assessment report that you had, their recommendation was four to five million, just to barely try to chip away at that, so we, those are some budgetary conversations we should have, if that's the direction we want to go. We haven't had those yet, and the budget I'm preparing to submit to you does not recognize four to five million.
Be surprised. And the last thing, how do you pick an architect for design, apparently, when we haven't even decided whether we're gonna have one large middle school, two smaller, or one smaller middle school, or renovate? I mean, how, isn't that putting the cart before the horse, picking an architectural firm before you have a clue what you're doing?
So they, they will do all of that. So this, this now kicks off the public process to hold listening sessions, visioning sessions, gather all that feedback, input, meet with teachers, students, parents, the public at large, to try to decide what does that design look like? Is it one school? Is it two? Is it one school with the realization that only one school's in the MSBA program? If we keep two separate schools, one of them is not funded through this project. Or is it a consolidated school? Which location? Or neither of those locations? There's a lot of things that the public's gonna be asked to weigh in on to help the architects come up with a design.
Good.
Great, yeah, of course. I, you know, I always say it would be great if we could have two schools in one building, but I'm sure that won't get dealt with. I just want to comment a couple of things. When the fire department, after the, there was a fire, fire at 1446 Long Meadow Street, and, you know, at the time, the responders thought that there was an elderly person inside the building, and they made several attempts to go into the building. And I just want to remind our residents of what a courageous fire department we have, and we're really lucky to have them keeping us safe. The other thing is the, in the police department, they talked about having lockdown drills at the schools, and, you know, I was recently called to a situation in Connecticut where they, they, there was allegations, there was a, they thought there was a person at risk, a shooter at risk, and they had the police, the state police and the local police, and everybody showed up, and it really freaked people out. It really, you know, the teachers were pretty freaked out. And so, these drills are really important, hoping you never have to have an actual event, but, you know, it, you know, people need to know sort of what, what's gonna happen. And, you know, so that's, that's what I had, but thank you for the report. Other folks?
Fenee, did you have... Yeah, Mark's question, I mean, your answers to Mark's questions about the first item, the grant for Bliss Park, covered mostly what I was gonna ask, but just one thing, the, do we have any idea when we hear back about the grant?
I should know that, and I feel like Corinne has talked to me about that before, and it, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I will bring that back the next time.
Okay, great. And, you know, great to see that with Greenwood Center, that we had a bid come in lower for the painting than we originally, you know, planned for. It's good, it's good to see that happening, you know, again and again, and that's very encouraging. And then, you know, to go over to the DPW report real quickly, in the report, they outline all of the different projects that will be taking place in town over the summer, and, you know, at the end, you know, they wrote, you know, "Sorry for the inconvenience in advance," which, there are so many different projects that will be occurring this summer, everything from, you know, the Bliss Pool to streets and redoing our playgrounds for elementary schools, and it probably will cause some amount of inconvenience, but I think a lot of these projects have been long overdue, and once we complete all these projects, the town is gonna be so much better off after it, and so, you know, I'm looking forward to, to these construction projects being completed, and, you know, and I know that DPW has a lot of work ahead of them, and, you know, I just, again, would ask the town to, you know, bear with us, you know, for any inconvenience this may cause, because I do think the town will end up, you know, much better off because of these projects this summer.
Well said, yeah.
I should post on the forum.
Lynn, I want to say thank you for the track report. I like to see that. That's my, I don't know, I have too much interest in that probably, but I, and I'm glad you're getting this, the Safe Streets Committee, that I know, I talked to a couple people, applied, and I'm really glad there was a lot of interest in that. I had a question about something that's on the report. Have we gotten two months of EV bills yet?
We should have another one today, actually.
Okay, yeah. As we get closer, I don't know where, if we're getting a lot of use at other places, I doubt it. places, I doubt it with our fee, but as we get closer to having Wolf Swamp open again for the spring sports season, I, I would love if we got a, if we could reconvene and have a better rate.
Yeah.
Because I think that we're, we're way off, and I, yeah, I'd like us to get a panel on this soon.
So my, yeah, I've been doing a lot of research on that, and it's actually branched out, now that we have our own data, to other communities and comparing our electric bill to their electric bill. I plan to have a lot more information for you at an upcoming meeting. It's not, what I'm gathering right now is not showing that you can reduce your rate and break even. Because right now, the rate that we're charging is not even coming close to covering half of the cost.
Well, then something's wrong, because.
Everybody else is subsidizing.
I don't think so. This, well, maybe, I don't know.
I'll have more information with, with example bills.
Let's get the data.
Yeah, I just, it's so, if that's what our rates are, then something is a disaster.
Yes, yes.
Exactly.
But I don't, I just want to be careful. It, I don't believe the disaster is just Long Meadows. I think it's a disaster across the board with how this is applied to commercial accounts.
Guess who makes, makes off on?
Well, yeah.
Because the communities I've talked to, we are in the exact same position they are. They're, if not, we're in a better position, because we're actually charging a rate that's closer to what it actually costs to operate the system, as opposed to the other communities that are either not charging a rate or charging a very small percent of kilowatt hour, and they're greatly subsidizing the cost of charging.
Maybe we should just put a sign up that says it's not our fault.
Good, thank you, yeah.
I just, Josh said thank you for the track report. I want to thank you and Sean for the DPW report. I thought it was very helpful, useful, and I appreciate it, and please keep it coming.
All right. Any other comments on the manager's report? Okay, then we will move on to old business.
Treating.
Yeah, treating.
Start a hearing, yeah. We got a couple hours left, so, and so we look at the, we should probably, there's no minutes, so we just move on to the.
Just to give you some background, I, I started utilizing the Zoom AI companion tool, which is new, and it's just taking a while. It's, it ended up creating a little bit more work, actually, so not going to be utilizing in the future, but just figured I'd test it out.
That was a long meeting, too.
It was, and that was, I probably picked a bad meeting. So I think I'll try, maybe not on this one, but maybe the next one.
All right, well, you gave us a heads up.
Getting better, my son.
Okay, so that's that, and then we'll move on to the Citizen of the Year Award Policy, and, you know, last meeting, we had a look at it, and we have it to look at again for the, you know, as we look at this policy, is there any other comments about having two awards, an individual award and a group award? And it talks about the nomination process. I don't know if you want to speak?
Well, I just, did we, I don't remember why we didn't, well, we voted on it to let it stew, but are we, do we get an answer on whether this would be open meeting law? The committee?
The committee, if it has elected officials on it, yes.
Is everyone okay with that?
The planning board, so then people would hear who's going to get it.
Well, if, if somebody was to go on and see the agenda.
Except that people read minutes.
Yeah, if they were going, if they were going to the meeting, if they saw the agenda and came to the meeting, they could hear. Otherwise, they'd have to read the minutes.
Yeah.
Mike, God love you. Minutes are not a hot ticket, but.
Because we managed to have, it was a, it was a commit, it was a, right, it was a town manager's committee, right? So we didn't have to have minutes in the past?
No.
Last time we did it?
We should have.
Oh, I wasn't on it last time, I don't know.
I, I was on it, we should have.
The time before we didn't, we had, we didn't need minutes a couple years ago.
The time before, you were doing it in executive session, where there is no allowance for that.
That was two times.
It's not an allowed exception.
So then we did a hybrid town manager task force with select board. It's almost similar to what we're doing here. Those meetings should have been posted.
All right. The cloak and dagger isn't necessary, I think.
No, we have, it'll be a well-represented group of people who know, who are making contributions to the town, so, any other discussion on?
I'll move we adopt this policy.
Okay, second, okay. No further discussion. All those in favor? opposed? None, of course, sorry. And then we move to the exciting revised budget calendar, and I actually want to thank Lynn for revising the schedule, so that people would have more time to, you know, work on the budget and, and reduce costs, so the.
Liz, right?
No, this is the old one.
This is the wrong one, yeah, because it has us hearing from the school board.
Yep, no.
This is with the school board, which is going to be next.
Everything is pushed back a week. Well, I shouldn't say everything. The publication deadlines are all the same. Your presentation from the school committee will be on March 4th.
It says that under March 4th, it just didn't accept the line, it just didn't accept the track changes. So just disregard what it says on February 20th. If you look under March 4th, it still says school F Y 25 budget presentation, and then if you go to March 18th, it says town manager budget presentation. So it was updated, just the February 20th wasn't, track changes weren't accepted.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
And those, I believe, are the only two changes.
And, so we have, and at this point, is there an additional select board meeting that are usually scheduled ones?
You have not set up any yet. Usually you decide that after you receive the budget from me.
I guess that makes sense.
You would decide if you want to hold any budget hearings with departments. And I also believe there's a request from finance committee to have your March 4th and March 18th meetings as joint meetings.
Okay, that sounds familiar. We could do that.
With the finance committee.
They want to be part of the meeting for the budget, school budget presentation, and then again, when I present, March 18th.
I know sometimes we've attended those, but they haven't been joint, but.
Those are the, the finance committee public hearing on the budget, and then also they have a meeting where they vote on the recommendations of the warrant articles, so those are two separate things that they typically invite the select board to.
All right. Okay, so thank you for sharing this, and we'll be ready for the May 14th annual town meeting.
Do we have to adopt this, Tom?
We have.
We didn't adopt the last one.
It says adopt it at the bottom, I'm sorry.
I think you do, I don't know why you do, but you generally do.
Okay, so do we have a motion to accept the budget calendar that's been updated for fiscal year 24, for 2024?
Now, I move with February 20th struck.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All right. So now we go to new business, and we have the North Intercepter Project, as it's described by, in a memo by the town engineer, Tim Keen, acquisition or modification of these easements or those projects were authorized at the annual town meeting of May 2021. This memo goes on explaining the subsequent actions taken since town meeting, as well as the current status of the easement acquisitions. Town council has prepared an order of taking for the select board to review for one property, 18 Severance Street. Supporting documents along with the motion is included in tonight's meeting packet, and we need to sign this if it's approved. Is there a motion?
I just had one question.
Yes.
So just on the wording, I think I lost it, at the very bottom, and I don't have in front of me, but I recall it said Board of, I think it said Board of Selectmen? I think we just want to change that to Select Board.
Yep, you're right. It says I hereby move that the Board of Selectmen, you're right, yeah. As long as we're asking questions, I, I, Lynn, my, my question would be, what were the, what was the basis for, for the compensation? And more importantly, were the people who agreed to, you know, an easement, were they also compensated at the same rate?
The.
Or the same kept formula, I guess?
Yes, appraisals were done of each parcel we're required to, and that's what triggers us sending the notice with the offer to each of the parcels.
Okay, so, and, and so the people who agreed to the easement proposal got, are being paid whatever the.
Yes.
The appraisal was, and this is, and, and this order taking is again also the appraised?
Correct.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure there was no gain or loss by holding out.
So if you look in Tim's memo, there's a chart there that shows you the status of the four parcels.
Yeah, right.
I don't believe any of them have been compensated yet, because we haven't actually recorded anything.
Right, but the form, like I said, I just wanted to make sure there was no gain or loss because of the.
No.
The holdout process. If you're looking for a motion, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion and might, I hereby move the select board acquire by eminent domain for the necessary health and welfare of the inhabitants of Long Meadow for municipal purposes, more specifically, the relocation and repair of a sewer system, as authorized pursuant to Article 30 of the Town of Long Meadow Annual Town Meeting of May 16, 2021, and further to authorize the Chair, Tom LaCusa, to execute and enter into any and all documents necessary to effectuate the acquisition of said property. A portion of the property located at 18 Severance Street, Long Meadow, Massachusetts, and described in the deed recorded with the Hampton County Registry of Deeds in Book 14133, page 540, described as follows, a temporary non-exclusive easement over, in, through, and under and upon that portion of the property depicted as quote TE4 unquote and quote TE5 unquote, and permanent non-exclusive easement over, in, through, under, and upon the portion of the property depicted as quote PE2 unquote, on the plan and land entitled quote Plan of Land in Long Meadow, Massachusetts, Western Drive and Severance Street unquote, prepared by Sherman and Frederick LLC dated September 16, 2020, and recorded with the Hampton County Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 393, page 125. And I hereby move that the select board award damages for said eminent domain taking the amount of $11,000 to the affected record owners of said land.
Okay, do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. And so next we move to a proposed bylaw revision, and in our packet, we have a memo from the Director of Planning and Community Development, Corinne Muse Munz, informing the select board about the proposed revisions to general bylaw, Chapter 242, and to initiate the zoning bylaw amendment process pursuant to Mass General Law C 40 A S 5. Corinne, would like, you're here, and would you like to comment further on this proposed revision?
Hi, thanks. Thank you. So this memo is a little bit unusual, if, that the major purpose of it is to inform you of the proposed changes that the planning board is putting forward, hopefully for this annual town meeting 2024, which triggers the Chapter 40 A, Section 5 process, which we're so familiar with at this point, where we have to give it to the select board, the select board then votes to refer it back to the planning board, and then that kicks off the public hearing process through the planning board to hear public comments and then make their recommendation to town meeting. So that's really, I included the proposed track changes for the zoning bylaw for your information, and there was a little bit of an explanation about why the planning board is deciding to pursue this, but the, the thing that makes this process for the signed bylaws a bit unique is that one of the proposals for the sign, the signed bylaw nested in zoning, so Article 9 of the zoning code, is that it's going to be, if these changes move forward, absorbing most of Chapter 242 of the general bylaws, and that's obviously a different process. General bylaw is going to have to follow Chapter 40 A, Section 5, there's no public hearing requirement, and it's not under the control of the planning board. So I included the track changes for Chapters 242, which is the general bylaws regulating signs, billboards, and other advertising devices, that those track changes, I didn't necessarily expect you to have a robust conversation about those tonight. It's more to inform you that that will have to happen part and parcel with the, with the zoning change process. And as I stated in the memo, at this point, our town council is in receipt of those changes for the general bylaw that we're proposing, but we haven't received any comments from him specifically, so that I don't, I don't necessarily have anything to add to what you see there. The, the only thing that in this document remains after the track changes, oh, the removal of most of the language again, and to go into zoning bylaw, if it wasn't already stated there, is the language governing temporary signs for events and political sign, temporary political signs. Those, our town council has advised us are largely unenforceable. We do not want to move them into the zoning code and then have to go into revise a zoning code later when we are able to, they, they need more attention than we're able to give them before annual town meetings, so I'm not proposing any changes for those at this time. And also, we, in discussion with Lynn, we thought it was a good idea to not be proposing any changes to sign, the sign, the portion of the general bylaws governing political signs during a presidential election here. So that's why those look untouched right now, but that isn't to say that we won't be recommending changes to those in the future when we've had more of a chance to work with town council on revising them, and then also a discussion with you, the select board, about what you would like to see, would not like to see in terms of removing or amending any of those provisions around the temporary political signs and advertising signs. So that's a summary of what you're seeing. I have to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, thank you. It's, it's great. I'm, I'm glad that they're, they won't allow animated or video tronic signs. That's good news, because I don't really need to see those in town. Any questions from the board?
I mean, my, I just want to clarify. My understanding is that the planning board is going to hold hearings on this. These are just their, these are their proposals, but this may not be what comes back to us following those hearings, and in fact, may not be what appears therefore appears on the warrant. But the intent is to provide something in time for the annual town meeting warrant. Is that correct?
Yes.
Right, so we need to refer this, we're, so our job tonight is to refer this to the zoning bylaw amendment and to the planning board for further review.
We need a motion for. I move that we refer revisions to zoning bylaw Article 9 and general bylaw, Section 242, to the planning board for public hearing and consideration.
Second.
Can I offer a point of information?
Yeah. Oh, sorry, 242 is not a public hearing. Sorry, go ahead, Corinne.
Sorry, I didn't hear what you said, Josh, but the.
Yeah, go ahead.
We were making the same call, which is that Chapter 242 does not have to go to the planning board, and I don't, the planning board, I don't, I mean, they might be able to have public hearing about anything that they want, but they don't necessarily have, it's not under their jurisdiction per Mass General Law, so I would recommend just the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, sorry, yes, so, so I, yeah, revoke that motion.
Let's, yeah, start over again.
I move that we refer zoning bylaw Article 9 to the planning board for public hearing and review.
Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you, Corinne.
Great, thanks.
Now we have the MSBA accelerated repair for windows and roof at, at Center Street School, and so there's a statement of interest for the MSBA accelerated repair for the roof and windows at Center School. A motion for the statement of interest is also included, and Lynn, would you like to comment on this, this statement of interest?
Yeah, so as you all know, we've, we have work that's needed at Center School. We've been talking about this for several years. Notably, it's the roof and windows. The windows are not at an age where they actually are eligible for the accelerated repair program, they're just one year too young, but we. They're just one year too young, but we did not feel that it was responsible to wait and prolong the roof issues any longer. So we want to submit this SOI for March 1st. That's the deadline. This is the first year that the accelerator repair program has been up and accepting applications since 2022. They paused it in '23. We had intended to submit then, and then they halted the program. And so we're trying to get in there. We do anticipate there will be quite a few applications. So if we are not successful, we will likely be having some other kinds of conversations about how we can further this work. We have some money set aside through capital funding and community preservation for the windows, but it's not even, it's not nearly enough to do the full project that we need.
Enough to do one window.
Yeah. So this application in front of you tonight has gone through the school committee as well. It's been prepared by the DPW, Facilities Director, and the Superintendent, and been vetted by the school committee, and so it needs your approval as well to submit to MSBA in about a week and a half.
Okay, so we have a typed up motion.
I think Dan wants to read this one.
What?
Dan, I think you want to read this.
Don't let me read.
It's our clerk. I think it's the clerk's job.
All right, all right. Oh, geez, all right.
Do I have to read this whole thing?
Yes, you do.
It's the whole thing. And don't mess up or you'll start from the beginning.
No, just kidding. So, so I move to adopt the following SOI. Having convened in an open meeting on February 20th, 2024, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Select Board of Town of Long Meadow, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated March 2024 for the Center School located at 837 Long Meadow Street, describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future, Priority 5. Replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as the roof to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. The roof requires a full replacement due to leaking that is impacting the normal operation and educational environment. Center School has frequently had to modify scheduled student instruction due to water infiltration issues that stem from the age and condition of the facility's roofing systems. A recent snow ice event made apparent the degree to which the school's roofing system is compromised. Two hallways, a stairwell, faculty bathroom, and three classrooms were inaccessible due to water infiltration. The Select Board hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Long Meadow Public Schools to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
And we have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. And we have a discussion about the capital improvement as part of the town's long-range plan update. The BETA group has been working on a parallel project to review our existing capital planning process. The review is being done to make recommendations on ways to make our capital planning process more sustainable, resilient, and climate-forward. And Lynn would like to discuss this memo a little bit more, and we also need to sign this, so I'm gonna send this back down there. Lynn?
Yeah, so this is just to make you aware of this. We can have further conversations at a different point if you'd like, but I wanted to make sure you had this information. Beta has prepared the memo to us that's really considered their final memo. The working group's gonna gather again, actually tomorrow, I think it is, to review this memo and make sure that we're, we're all on the same page with it as we move forward. But I know here we've talked about other changes to potentially the capital planning process and/or the committee itself. And I wanted to take this opportunity to bring these two topics together, because one thing that has really been apparent to me over the last few years is outside of our roadway water sewer projects, really, it's town buildings and school buildings that are the bulk of our capital, and it's also the bulk of where are, we can make some really substantial changes in terms of resiliency and climate-forward thinking. And so just one idea that I've been kicking around is a revision to the actual capital planning committee to merge it more with the permanent building committee, because permanent building does meet year-round, whereas capital planning meets only for about three or four months a year. So there is a disconnect outside of those meetings that there's these projects moving forward that capital planning isn't aware of because they weren't there for the conversations the rest of the year. So I think we potentially have an opportunity, or I guess it's my opinion, that we have an opportunity to really re-look at what these committees could be, or whether or not there's an opportunity to consolidate them and look at the resilient capital planning process as kind of the first step in making some changes to both of those groups. But again, I, this is just an initial conversation. It's my, just my quick thoughts on this, and I would hope that you would all spend some time thinking about it, talking with people, and then we could have a much deeper conversation about, you know, whether it makes sense, and maybe there's a better way to do something.
Okay, and is there any, any point where they're, so like the long-range planning, do they ever submit stuff to capital planning?
No.
Okay, so there is a conflict
This would be that.
of interest in that sense, or no conflict of interest? I guess that's my main question.
They wouldn't submit a capital project, no. If that's what, if I'm understanding what you're asking.
Well, I'm just looking at, is there a conflict of interest between the groups where one would say, well, we used to be able to do this, now we can't.
Oh, do you mean between permanent building committee
Yeah.
and capital planning?
Yeah, between the permanent building committee and capital planning, there's no conflicts that you can see, or?
No, I mean, I wouldn't say conflict. The only thing I've seen is a disconnect between what, who's doing what and why, and maybe permanent building could have strong feelings about some project moving forward, but capital planning doesn't know the full picture of all the other issues that have happened at some facility and why it's important. So that kind of conversations happen, but I wouldn't necessarily call it conflict. But I see a lot of opportunity to consolidate them into one group.
And so part of it that makes sense to me is that the long-range planning committee has a variety of different folks on there with different expertise, and so you think that'll be valuable?
Capital planning, I'm sorry, permanent building committee or long-range?
Permanent building committee. You know, because they have, they have an architect and they have, you know, people with building experience, so so that would be something that would be of value.
Yeah, potentially. I mean, I didn't come up with any drafts of composition of the committee yet, but I'm not suggesting that you have a nine or 12-person committee either. You should, we should be careful about how large we want to make something. But I think certainly the expertise on the permanent building committee has been beneficial for permanent building, and I could see it being beneficial for capital planning.
Yeah, so I guess I agree with that. Yeah, Mark, do you want to say?
Yeah, a couple things. One is that three or four years ago, Tom, you'll remember that our, our Charter Review Committee had some recommendations about modifying the capital planning and approval process, and those were kicked down the road, I think, and not addressed, and I'd like to renew those, not that they're necessarily the right ones. In fact, I know I personally didn't agree with some of them, but, but nevertheless, I think we should take a look at them, and I'll be glad to share them with Lynn and share them with the board, and I think that's, that's the first part of it. The second thing is, I just want to caution a little bit that the intent of the capital planning committee goes beyond the intent of the building committee, and whatever we create as an entity needs to make sure we don't leave any gaps. Capital planning, it was not just buildings, it was anything capital. It was defined way back when at over $10,000 and a 10-year greater useful life, so it includes, you know, DPW major equipment, and I remember once we bought a letter opener for, or something for the town hall or something. So, you know, I think it's important that we not duplicate efforts and certainly not have one group heading one direction, another group heading in another direction, but I don't want to lose the fact that I think, and my bias is that I was once chair of the capital planning committee, I think having citizen input to the capital priorities has value, and I would not like to lose that.
Like that. Any other thoughts at this point?
Is there a timeline, Lynn, by which you want this to happen?
Well
I mean, the capital planning process doesn't start until the fall. We're done this year. So does that mean we've got through the summer to get this thing ironed out?
Well, potentially, but the capital planning process isn't done yet, actually hasn't even, my piece of it's done. You're, you haven't started your piece.
Right, but I assume we're not going to change this for this year's process, are we?
No, we can't.
Right, so that's what I'm saying.
One thing that also is, we would need to figure out is, is actually not much in the charter that needs to change. There's actually nothing in the charter about composition of capital planning. It's in a select board vote from 1991. It's not in a bylaw, so.
But, but the flow of information in the charter was based on an assumption of what, of how the town would work with the town manager, but was really centered on pre-town manager flow of capital, and that's, in my opinion, why there's an opportunity to modify or if not modify, certainly clarify the flow of capital, the capital process, because it's a, it's a mess right now in my, between town manager, department heads, capital planning committee, the finance committee, there's, there's no, there's no meaningful and appropriate flow to it. And that's why I think the Charter Review Committee was on the right track. Don't happen to agree with every detail they put in there, but they were on the, certainly on the right track, because having now had, whatever, 12, 13 years with the town manager, we understand that the assumptions didn't, weren't correct. That's all.
All right. Good. So we'll be getting more information from Mark, and then do we want to put this on a future agenda item?
Yeah, and I think if anyone has any comments, you can send them to me individually, and we can, I guess, decide if we want to put, develop something that I bring forward to you, or we want to set up a separate conversation about it at a future meeting.
Lynn, not to put you on the spot, but I'm gonna put you on the spot. How's the, like, just communication with capital planning? It sounded, it sounds like, I think you just mentioned that you haven't even received anything, or you're waiting for capital planning, or is that, is that a normal process?
So the way it works is generally I kick off the capital plan by sending out the forms to the departments. Usually it's mid to beginning of October. They have so many weeks to prepare, prepare their submissions. They get those to me, they say, the beginning of November. I spend two to three weeks putting it all together, seeing how it can fit, talking with them, figuring out priorities, and then I develop a capital plan that I submit to the capital planning committee in the beginning of December. They're supposed to meet December, January, February, and submit a capital plan to the select board for discussion. They met in December, and they have not met again since then. No department heads have been called into them. They have set up a meeting Friday. They set up a meeting for tomorrow night. Will be their first meeting on the plan that I submitted. So it is definitely very late, but
Is this consistent with this committee in the past, or you've experienced it?
This is the latest, usually we're getting a plan by now. And sometimes their plan, I mean, their capital planning committee, they don't have to adopt my plan. They can make changes. They've done that in the years past, and then you guys get to decide what you want to do. So to Mark's point, I think there's pieces of this that are incredibly redundant that I, I think we could make more efficient. And there, there's definitely a lot of frustration from departments about it as well. It starts so early, and by the time they go to actually sign a contract, those quotes are long past good. So that has been a complication, but, yeah.
Okay, after no further things, we should move on. Our next agenda item is a one-day liquor license application for real motion for the Adult Community Center Fund.
I'll move we approve the one-day liquor license application for March 14th, 2024, and March 15th, 2024, from the Long Meadow Adult Center Community Fund.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, and so, you know, one of the things we, in our correspondence, we have a couple of things. One is, you know, we had a dog hearing, and we sent something out to the owner of the dog, Mrs. Goldberg, and, and since then, we've received a request for a waiver on the decision. We, we had asked, you know, for two, two different things, and so, you know, we are, we've contacted our, our legal defense folks here, and they made a, I mean, we had our, our lawyer sitting here, so obviously we didn't do anything illegal. We made a request, and, and again, with a dog hearing, I mean, that's a very tricky thing, but the goal of the board, I mean, I believe the goal of the board is to reduce the conflict, to make things better, and we did our best to make things better. This was the best we can come up with at that time, and, and he say, well, you know, we, our suggestion isn't viable according to Mr. Goldberg, who is the son of the owner. So, you know, I imagine we'll have a discussion in a future meeting about, you know, if we can make a waiver for the one decision that we made, yes?
Tom, I guess my, my question is, i- is this letter considered a formal request to the board? Or is it just communications? Because it's a, if it's a formal request, I think, I don't know, are we back to square one? Or are we doing like we did with the other dog hearing, where people came back and said, you know, we'd like to change the modification to, to the House, and we had a formal discussion on that? And, and so my only question is, what and how do we respond to a letter like this?
Yeah, that's a good question, and so we did ask town council to weigh in on it, but the, when we look at the, the request, it's to Paula Goldberg, and this letter's not from Paula Goldberg, so it isn't cosigned by her. So I guess that's a good, good thing, is like, how, how do we know that it's, you know? And, and our council said we probably shouldn't reopen the hearing, because, you know, once we make a decision, it's a decision. And so, you know, so yes, we, the question is, you know, here's a person who's not the dog owner, who's asking us for something. Do we need to respond to that? What's going to make the situation better? What's going to make the situation worse? And so, you know, yes.
Yeah, just a couple of things on that. I, I think our goal in the dog hearing is not to reduce conflict, it's to make the neighbors happy. And I think that what Larry is requesting could potentially make the neighbors happy. So I think we should respond. We, we have to, I'd like to be consistent. We took another waiver request over email, and not coming from Mrs. Goldberg, that's a valid point. And she could sign it. We did let him appear on her behalf, so I, I think we should take it up, because if, if they're, if the way to get the dog to come inside is to have Larry called first, then I think that we should do that, and I hope there wouldn't be more conflict, which I also, I don't want that, but I don't think that's our goal necessarily. But it sounds like it's gonna be moved by the time we really take it up. If his mother's moving into, in with Larry, as he says, it may not matter, but if, if we can make this small change, I think we should try to do that.
Okay, so do you think we should, do any other comments? Okay, so do you think we should, do, any other comments?
I mean, I just think no matter what type of change or anything we say or do, with Mr. Goldberg, we've seen what, how he's acted in the past. I mean, the, the, the dog, help me out here, the dog saying, I'm going to say warden, but I don't mean that.
Animal control officer.
Animal control officer.
Animal control.
Just a couple of weeks ago was, wanted to get a police escort to her, her vehicle, so.
I agree.
I mean, I agree with Josh, man, I don't think we can ignore, ignore these requests. We need to be more consistent, but if I put myself in Mr. Goldberg's shoes, and that's my, my mom has this dog, number one, my mom probably shouldn't have the dog. Number two, I'm, I'm going over to see my mom every single day I can as much as possible, and I'm going to try to help make the situation better for an elderly person. So we can try to make amends here and work with Mr. Goldberg, but he hasn't really worked much with the town, so we should also be cognizant of the fact that, you know, we make amends, is it really going to do anything? Maybe it makes things worse, and then he gets in a fight with Mr. Sullivan as well. So I'm just going based on sitting here in these hearings, listening to how he reacts to us, to other people, other residents, and that's what really concerns me. I mean, I think we've been more than fair trying to protect the residents who want to go outside and, you know, enjoy a cup of coffee on their deck, you know, so that's really all that I, I just fear that it's, nothing better is going to happen or come from this, but from what I've seen, but.
So, I mean, I guess I'd feel more comfortable if, at least you'd signed, if it was a request that was signed by the owner of the dog. I don't know. I mean, does that make sense? And we could let him know that in order, you know, we'll, if the owner of the dog signs it, because that's when we sent the, the information we sent, you know, for the, the hearing decision was sent to, to the owner of the dog, Paula Goldberg, that she would need to sign it, and then, you know, I mean, I guess if, if there's one person here who wants to put it on the agenda, we'll put it on the agenda. If I don't hear that, he can make the request, and we could, you know, it doesn't mean we have to act on it, because our lawyer will just could look at the formal request again and inform us, I don't know. So I guess the next thing we do, if Mike, if you could just get in contact with Mr. Goldberg and ask him to have his mother sign the request for revisions, and then we'll take it from there, I guess. All right. Yes, Mark?
Another topic?
Yes, new topic.
Yes, so Lynn, also in our correspondence was a freedom of information request. I was just wondering if town has made any assessment of what the cost of the town has been to comply with that, or is likely to be?
We've, we ran an initial query on how many emails that is. I think right now it's 89. That's as far as we've gotten. We have until Friday to reply to it. I have delegated it to Mike to go through, because you're supposed to, there's a calculation on how you have to do it. So Mike will take a first pass through, because I initially looked at it very quickly, and usually when these come back, they're, they're pretty quick to go through the emails. In this case, unfortunately, because of who they were, who the emails involve, there's quite a bit of executive session material included, so it's going to, it's not as quick. So no, so yes and no. We've done some preliminary. I'm hoping we can stay under the two hours, but it's possible that we will not be able to.
That's good enough for the answer. Thank you.
All right. I'll move your adjourned. Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for joining us. We'll see you in two weeks.